All right. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and you are here with the Athens Clark County Mayor and Commission. This evening, we'll have a special called session to consider votes on a handful of items in addition to our annual taxpayer bill of rights hearing. And we will also have our regularly scheduled agenda setting session. To go ahead and begin, I'd like to ask Clerk Sprattland to call the roll, please.
Devonford?
Yeah.
Parker?
Here.
Lee? Lee? She's here, is she not? Wright?
Present.
Denson?
No.
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Myers? Jeff? Thornton? Andy?
Here.
And we have a forum.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate it. All right, as noted a couple of moments ago, our first order of business is public input on the proposed FY two thousand and twenty-two budget as part of the state mandated taxpayer bill of rights hearing. For the folks who are gathered in the chamber, substantive discussion on the budget will continue on Thursday. You will see the budget as a placeholder on the agenda setting meeting, simply because we are in the cycle where that will be receiving a vote the first Tuesday of June or June first. But if you're looking for the next significant discussion by this body, that will be two days from tonight on Thursday. So welcome to City Hall. And if you just let us know where you reside and your name, each of you will have three minutes. So I'm going to go ahead and call for public comment right now.
Keep my mask on?
Either way.
Okay. Hello, Mayor and Commission. Thank you. My name is Nene Onya-Ha Clayton. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Nene Onya-Ha Clayton. I live at one hundred and forty-five Three Oaks Drive, Athens, Georgia. My roles in the community are a steering committing member of the Green Jobs Pipeline Coalition and the Workers Center Coalition and Alliance for Social Bill of Rights. In these capacities, I would like to reiterate bringing equitable practices through funding the work of the Green Jobs Pipeline and the Workers Center that is being set up. Equitable practices are urgently needed in all spheres of public and private economic activity to begin to address the generations of economic marginalization of Black, Brown, and other minority communities in our county and country. Athens Clark County can begin to speak to existing structural inequities in the following suggested ways. Firstly, provide support and funding for the Workers Center and for the Green Jobs Pipeline projects. Secondly, introduce Department of Labor standard apprenticeship standards into RFPs for developers bidding for city projects and within tax allocation districts as a community benefit. Thirdly, introduce fair wages for all Athens Clark County employees comparable to twenty dollars an hour or more. Fourthly, fund the development of evidence and study-based equity benchmarks and ensure that the city meets them. For example, properly conducting and funding the Equity Study and Youth Apprenticeship Program in conjunction with the school district to secure valuable equitable career opportunities for our youth graduating from high school. This is a proactive imperative. Please know that the call for economic equity will only grow louder over time. If the moderate to conservative Joe Biden administration can understand this, then I believe that Athens Clark County can as well. This administration's American Jobs Plans aims are to create good quality jobs that pay prevailing wages in safe and healthy workplaces, while ensuring workers have a free and fair choice to organize, join a union, bargain collectively with employers. The plan will also ensure that Americans who have endured systemic discrimination and exclusion for generations finally have a fair shot at obtaining good paying jobs and being part of a union. Just as importantly, if not more so, it would reorientate ACC away from the historical racist and anti-worker policymaking that has weakened our workforce and promulgated destructive multigenerational phenomena that have disproportionately impacted BIPOC. This is now so familiar to national, how long do I have? National policymakers as to be considered academic, but is not less urgent to address for all of this. Whether we like it or not, the national policy climate and equity climate is fast changing. Therefore, we have a right, we have a duty to align ourselves with this agenda. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Nene. Welcome to the mic. Come on up.
Hey, guys. Can you hear me okay? My name's Gray, my name's Gray Riley. I'm an attorney here in Athens. And I just wanted to speak briefly on the budget for the DA's office and the Public Defender's Office. I'm a longtime supporter of Deborah Gonzalez and I, and I, you know, I'm optimistic about her vision for the DA's office. But I want to urge the Commission to consider the other side of the courtroom when looking at these budgetary matters and, and consider some sort of increase in the Public Defender's budget as well. I was an attorney in that office for almost five years, and I know that it's one of the best public defender offices in the state. And, and it is often a thankless job. They operate under the radar a lot of times in the public arena. It's not a political position. And so I believe that the request is a fairly reasonable increase. And I would, I would urge the Commission to consider the impact of, of, of the disparity between the funding of those two offices. And I think I'll just leave it at that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gray.
Hi, good evening. My name is Allyn Carey, and I am a social worker here in Clark County. I am here today to speak about family homelessness, which is an incredibly complex issue and that as a social worker in the community, I see the consequences of not addressing as a, in, in a comprehensive way. Emergency shelter is important, and Athens Area Homeless Shelter here in Athens, working with family homelessness, does provide emergency shelter. But they have gone above and beyond that in the last several years to provide both the rapid rehousing for our region and, and a transitional shelter for families working towards educational goals and job skills goals to really make those housing transitions sustainable. I'm here as a constituent, as a service provider in our community and as a board member of the Athens Area Homeless Shelter, asking that Athens Area Homeless Shelter be prioritized for independent agency funding, care spending that's being determined and distributed in our community, and that they be part of the discussion on the development of a homeless liaison with providers in the community. Athens Area Homeless Shelter staff could offer invaluable feedback and help sort of shape what that role could look like and how it could best benefit the services that are already being provided here in Athens Clark County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lane.
Hello. My name's Tom Kenyon. I live in Athens. I've lived in Athens for ten years. I retired here for all the wonderful things that go on. I am also on the Board of Directors of the Athens Area Homeless Shelter. And I'd like to give support to what my colleague just said, but also remind you that our budget is over a million dollars a year. And we raise that money from foundations and grants. If that money was to go away, it would be hard pressed for the city or if our services went away, to step up to the plate and provide the kind of care that we are currently providing. If you add the other homeless support groups, the not-for-profits, the budget would go up to a million five to a million seven hundred thousand dollars. Since this is a budget, a budget discussion, I think it would be wise to concentrate on that and to see how, when you do your deliberations, the money might be best spent. There will be federal funding coming, and it's our understanding that the commissioners are reviewing whether or not to hire a coordinator as a part of that discussion. I'd like to ask the question and for you to think about, what will they be coordinating? Will they be coordinating the service providers? Will there be additional costs involved that would only duplicate the money already been spent? It's something that I think you should all be thinking about. The, also, will we be a part of the discussion if you decide to hire someone? We have been doing this for many years. I have worked with the homeless either on a board or as an executive director for over forty years. There are, we have an intellectual capacity and knowledge and background to be of assistance, not to be in any way adversary, but to provide you with some guidance that you might follow as you look for the kind of person you want. I would just end with the comment that if there is a comprehensive program for our services in Athens Clark County, the county will save money. So this is a budget discussion. So I look forward to hearing from you, and I know that all of the board at the Athens Area Humane Society looks forward to hearing what you come up with. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom.
How you doing? How y'all doing? My name is Quares Franklin, and I'm a resident of Athens. And just to give a little bit about myself, I've been a victim of gun violence my whole entire life since I've been like eleven years old, seeing the police kill the guy when I was eleven years old. So it really brought me up here today because I seen my mom, my momma in a lot of shelters and staying in poverty neighborhoods where we didn't have rugs, we didn't have heat, we didn't have anything like, so my mom was a single mom, like I said again. So what brought me up here, that. I come, I have NYM, Mentoring Young Men. It's a program like dedicated strictly like taking young kids off the street. So because when I was young, I realized like what I didn't have. So we start a program where we can teach kids like how to do resumes, like teach kids like how to be entrepreneurs, teach kids like how to wear suits and ties, teach kids how to look at your eyes, look in your eyes and shake your hands. Basically, I come up with a solution out of a lot of years, I come up with a solution on how to make the world a better place, on how to stop the gun violence, on how to stop all the gang banging, on how to do these things. But in order for me to do these things, I, I need you guys' help. I need help like we need vans, we need things that the community need for we can pour back into the youth who would stop the crime rate. So that's what I was basically here to let you guys know about.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Michael Songster. I live at fourteen fifty West Hancock Avenue. And I'm here tonight to voice my support for the Energy Coordinator position for the Sustainability Office. When we were working on the two thousand and twenty SLOSS project for the Renewable Energy project with one hundred percent Athens, in the back of my mind, I always had concerns that ACC lacked the capacity to spend. The, we were proposing eighteen million, now it's fifteen point eight million in ten years in an effective and efficient and targeted manner so that we could realize one of the promises of that project, which is to save roughly one point three million dollars of operating expense for the county. To kind of put in perspective where we currently are and have been for the last ten years. And I think that we have done a pretty good job. But we had a similar sort of project in the two thousand and eleven SLOSS that was one point one million dollars that we have not managed to spend fully yet over ten years. So I think that this position is crucial if we're going to be able to realize the potential for that project. Secondly, I, I have concerns that the budgeted amount for the salary is insufficient to attract a candidate that will be able to negotiate all that will come out of the energy plan and directing the funding in an effective and efficient and timely manner so that we can realize those savings earlier rather than later. So when, when asked, you know, what is that number that is going to get somebody in there that's going to be effective? And I think that the seventy to seventy-five K was a much more reasonable number in order to, you know, get that position filled with someone with sufficient experience and sufficient expertise so that we can get this project off the ground. We can realize those savings, and then y'all can decide what you're going to do with all that extra one point three million dollars, which I'm sure you have lots of ideas. And so that's, that's my bet.
Thanks, Michael.
Hello. My name is Linda Lloyd, and I live at two oh five Ambler Road here in Athens. I'm up here tonight to talk about the program. I was reading on the internet, the Reset Program. And then I also came across some more information that Department of Community Affairs offers us the same thing. I know the Commission are talking about taking the money out of the American Rescue Funds. And I would not suggest that when we already got a program that covers that in Atlanta, we could use our funding to alleviate the thirty-eight percent poverty rate that we have here in Athens Clark County. And the other thing that I want to say too is that all of you all, and, and you all are my friends. And all of you all ran on transparency. And so I don't think that any major program should be funded without a public hearing. Give the citizens input. It's not what you want. It's what the citizens want that, that voted to put you in. Now, I'm with Economic Justice Coalition, and I'm non-Partisan. This is not a partisan issue. This is about housing and how we're going to use our funds. And I just don't want people to get stuck into any one solution and not consider other solutions because you, you are sitting there and you have a mind to. Because what I'm learning is, is that sometimes people who come in and say that they are advocating for people who are poor are really, when they get in a position, they become the people who they were advocating against. And, and I've seen that. Now, I'm sixty-six years old, so I've seen a lot. And so I've seen that happen. And I think sometimes I feel it with you all sometimes. And I'm just trying to be honest. Now, I'm trying to be honest. God knows I'm trying to be honest. Y'all listen to me. I feel it with you sometime. And now Tim Denson, Tim is my commissioner. He know, he, he know me. And I don't want to come around the corner there and have to, you know, do anything to Tim because I love Tim, and I love all of you all, and I want you to do the right thing now. But you gotta think that sometimes we get stuck into a situation that, 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 that we feel is right and can't nobody else tell us. But now the poor people can really tell you if you come down, I promise. I know I haven't been around because I've been tired. I've been working so long. And I'm tired now, but I promise to help get folks down here who, who, who this Reset Program that you have will affect and see what they think about it if they know another program is available. I just want to end and say thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Maddox. I live at one fifteen Avalon Drive, Athens, Georgia. I've lived in Athens seventy-four years. I'm trying to make ninety. But some of these things are making it difficult. Whether you know it or not, I am your representative on the Department of Public DCA Board of Directors. I was appointed and I served there to represent what's going on and what we are needing. And our quarterly meeting last week, we, it was emphasized to us by Commissioner Nun that we have real assistance dollars in the tune of over a billion dollars. That's not all for Athens Clark County. But there is sufficient money, sufficient infrastructure, and sufficient access there to provide that. DCA is the same outfit that provides for housing choice vouchers. So our expertise has been demonstrated in this. I sat here to listen to all of the other fine people that were coming up and giving you ideas on things that need to be funded. Well, my suggestion is not to take whatever amount you're trying to take from the American Rescue Plan or from the CARES Fund and put it in a Reset Program and allow DCA, which has this money readily available without all the makeup things and the make it up as you go along. And then we can then dedicate these additional funds to solving some of the problems that we have here. If we have the funds, we have the means, and we have the availability to aid the people in this area on a project like Project Reset or Affordable Rent, then we need to take advantage of that and save our money to fund some of the other programs that the people that came before me are talking about.
Thank you, Charlie.
Good evening. My name is Linda Stevens. I'm from the Brookside Resident in Brookside Avenue one hundred, senior citizen. I'm here today to bring before you, I'm with EJC and a community leader. I'm saying with the fifty-plus million, I think the resident need to apply for the money that will help the small business build shelter for the homeless and affordable homes that people can afford. As I found out, even my own daughter got to move because her rent went up. Why? Just because she made five dollars more. So now she got to find somewhere else to live. Everything is Athens, one bedroom, nine hundred, eight hundred dollars. People want to live decent. They don't want to live in a place where crime and they scared to come out their apartment or home. So as a loving parent, I'm here to say it. With the fifty plus or more dollars, you need to listen to the resident with the need of the community is and affordable living, the cost of living. The nurses, I'm a nurse. That is great money that need to be spent in the COVID for the people that was impacted by COVID. It should be a plan where we should go out and help the COVID victim. They don't have the money. They appreciate the care that we come in and give them. But if you don't have the fund, what can you do? Another thing, seniors need help. I'm a senior. I don't look like it, but I'm a senior. Affordable Medicare. Our medicine is going up. We have to pay for transportation. They need help. It need to be appropriate for the elderly people. So I'm here to say, let's stop talking, get a committee up, not just your committee, our committee, and let's spend the money where it's needed on the people of Athens, the senior. P.S. Send the money for cares for the people who need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Hello, hello. My name is Asia Thomas, and I live at one seventy Kendler, Kendler Road in Athens, Georgia. And I'm here to advocate on behalf of the youth. I believe that some of this funding should go into supporting the youth. I am the founder of Kinokey Entrepreneur. We've been around about four years now, and we've kind of launched out into different branches of mentoring young men, and I can't end bullying. Before the pandemic, I traveled all around the U.S. speaking to kids about bullying and character development. And what we're seeing now in these impoverished areas is that these young people are being killed. They're being victims of bullying. It was just a story not that young, long ago where a young boy jumped out of the bus to avoid a bullying situation. And I really believe that the schools are limited on what they can do. With the program that we have, we go in and we talk to these kids about bullying. We talk to them about character development, and I've seen kids break down and start crying because a lot of their issues in bullying is coming from, from this place of poverty. When we have poverty, we have crime, we have bullying, we have a lot of different things going on because of these issues. We also have a program that deals with financial literacy, teaching kids about money and, and their purpose and identifying who they are and their value. And so, and also mentoring young men, which Quares Franklin came up here and talked about that a little bit, where, where we have the opportunity to go out on these streets and mentor some of these young men that they're, they're not, they're, they're looking for love, honestly. They're looking to build these type of relationships. And, and the first place that they're able to find it, if it's a gang, they'll gravitate toward that. And they're carrying guns out here on these streets, and it's not making it a safe environment in these impoverished areas. They're carrying guns, they're shooting at each other, they're hanging on the block, they're selling drugs. And a lot of it is because of the fact that they don't have guidance, they don't have a, a, a healthy outlet. They're just a product of their environment, and a lot of them are just being born into these situations. So these programs are going to help us be able to go out into the community, to be able to, to target these kids. We've talked to several single parents that were just like, we don't know what to do. The fathers are not in the, the picture, but they don't have transportation. We need vans. We need, we, we just need help. So I just feel like some of this funding needs to really begin to look at the issues that are going on amongst these youth and to be able to understand they are the future. You know, one day, they are the next commissioners, they are the next mayors. And a lot of times, they become a product of their environment that they just kind of go in this cycle. And so we're not, we're not in a place of just victimizing, but we're trying to pull them out of this place of poverty and help them to think and to know that they can be more than what they've come from, that they can overcome any obstacle, and that they can truly walk in their, their divine purpose. So we, we, we just really need help in this area. I think you all should really evaluate giving some of this money, a portion of it, to this, this youth program. Thank you. I think you all should really evaluate giving some of this money, a portion of it to this, this youth program. Thank you.
How y'all doing, Seth? Uh, my name is Hamilton Cole. I live at six twenty Aubrey Drive, Athens, Georgia. Um, my son, Keytravion Tyvon Cole, was recently, um, a victim of gun violence. Um, he was an artist, he was a rapper. And, um, what I've seen in my, um, years of being in these impoverished neighborhoods that a lot of, uh, black men and women have come up here and spoke about is the disconnect between your community centers, which are beautiful because you, you remodeled a lot of your community centers, they're beautiful, and the community itself. What we're seeing in, uh, is the disconnect with the community. Um, she just came up here and spoke about the impoverished neighborhoods. Uh, they have no outlets. Um, ten, twenty years ago, maybe they could go shoot ball or join a basketball team or, you know, uh, get on the youth, uh, soccer team, something of that nature. Now it's kind of like pushed back. They're not able to get in those programs because those programs are not really available at these community centers. Um, that leads to them stuck back on quote-unquote "the block" or, you know, engaged in activity, um, because, you know, idle hands, idle minds, you know, they're looking for an outlet. Once again, she spoke on love. Um, a lot of these kids in these communities look at, they have a warped sense of love because their love is geared towards having something. Their love is geared towards he or she has something to give me. It's not genuine because they come out of impoverished neighborhoods where if you don't have, you are not, you, 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 you're kind of quote self-human. And so what they're out there doing, our young, is trying to identify with themselves as adults before they even know what being an adult is. So now you have these young women or these young men out on the corners. And you feel them, you know, in the sense the same people who spoke or who care for them feel them. Why do they feel them? It's because the simple fact is they have no love system in these impoverished neighborhoods. They have no community center to go to. Yes, East Athens is open right now, but they have no programs for them. Yes, uh, Thomas and Lay Park may be open right now, but they have no, no guidance system, no one they can go to, event to, no one that'll be there and take care of them, no one that actually knows their name. And so what I'm here to speak about with, um, Keytravion Tyvon Cole Foundation, which I started yesterday, right along with his mother, um, Juana Glenn, is to reach out and bring about it, bring about a bridge and, and the gap between the community centers and the community, the impoverished community, to bridge that gap. And that's what I'm going to speak about and I guess, you know, a lot of people outside will speak about. So y'all have a nice day and I thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, sir. Who's next? Okay, hearing none others. Okay, we can filter more in. Maybe those who've spoken can filter out and make space. All right, we're ready for you. Step right up. Just tell us who you are and you have three minutes.
Can you see me?
Yes, you're all set. Look for it.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Farrell Neesmith. I'm the widow of the late Commissioner Jerry Neesmith. It's bittersweet that I stand before you here this evening to ask for your support for the full funding of the Jerry B. Neesmith Behavioral Health Co-Respondent Unit. Jerry's years on the commission and his time on the Board of Advantage Behavioral Health System led him to his deep conviction to help find a better way to fix the brokenness found on our streets. He recognized the crucial and complex work of our police officers. He understood that they are asked to go out every day and to go beyond the duties of law enforcement. He also recognized that the citizens of Athens are willing to help our frontline officers. It was a great honor to our family that Chief Spruill named the responder program after Jerry, recognizing his work towards this important collaborative program between the police and the behavioral health clinicians. With only two paired units in the operation, ACPD has managed to be able to provide de-escalation, diversion, crisis management and follow-up care to many ACC residents. As you know, these two units do not cover a twenty-four hour period. So I am here asking you to support, to vote, to fully fund the ongoing Jerry B. Neesmith Behavioral Health Co-Respondent Unit. I also want to add that I am aware that Advantage has a proposal called Alternative Response and Prevention Program. I think that we are very fortunate in Athens to have Advantage to help our residents in need. And I applaud any improvements that will make our current program better and would like to suggest that maybe Advantage call their new program as supplemental and not as an alternative. Thank you for your consideration and I hope you will support, continue to support this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neesmith. Nice to see you. Mr. Smith, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, uh, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm here tonight to, uh, talk about, uh, community, uh, engagement and community inclusion. Uh, as, uh, I go about the community, I was kind of struck tonight by some of the comments that others made before me. And it just semblts to me know the things that I had on my mind. I was like, wow. Uh, and so one thing that I would like for, ask that you do is to, uh, not to continue to do business as usual. Uh, and to, I do know that you are looking at doing, uh, some capacity to support for organizations that are not included and, and I commend you for that. But I would like for you to give even more priority to that. Because as I move about the community, I see the groups and organizations who have been involved, who have continued to work to, to support folks throughout the pandemic. But and many of these folks, they're doing it because it's in their heart and they're doing the work and they're close to people, but they do not, uh, get any support from the local government. So again, you, you're moving in the right direction and I commend you for that. But also I hope that you would give even greater because there's so many organizations and people out there that got ideas and who are engaged in doing, but don't, but don't get the support. And also I, I'm asking you to be smart with the monies that are coming. And, uh, as I heard other speakers, I agree about Project Reset, that maybe we're moving a little bit too fast, although it's kind of difficult to say moving too fast in a crisis. I understand that because that's one thing, uh, we have been crying about throughout the last, uh, months about how slow things have gone in terms of people being in a crisis. But at the same time, if the community affairs at the state, uh, has, uh, resources, then we should, uh, maximize those resources so, so that we can use, uh, the other resources here to help build the capacity of folks who have organization that are doing the work, that are working with people who got COVID, who are working with kids who, and can work with kids who are subject to, uh, gun violence, et cetera. So again, I ask that you, uh, 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 slow down, uh, listen to the community. There's, there's a difference between, you know, we can, you can call this, uh, community input and it is. But there's something else. There's another something called community engagement. So I, I would hope that we could have more, uh, uh, conversation, uh, about, uh, what the community, uh, think and believe and have some two-way, uh, change about what the best way to, to move forward. So again, I'm, I'm, uh, thank you for the, the step in the right direction. But again, we are in a crisis, so I ask that you, uh, do not do business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. First of all, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak. Um, but I'm here because children are dying in the streets. And that's a sad thing to say in Athens, Georgia. Children are dying in the streets. I had a, actually a student, uh, ye- yesterday whose mom was, uh, carjacked downtown. And I want you all to just imagine if it was your mother, your sister that was carjacked at gunpoint. I want you also to imagine if it was your son or your brother that was killed by gun violence and what that urgency would be to handle that situation or to handle the gun violence and the gang situation we have here. Uh, in my youth development programs, I teach my kids that communication is twenty percent verbal and eighty percent non-verbal. Now I know most of you, uh, hopefully, all of you will be campaigning in the next four years. Uh, and in those campaigns, you will say that you care about youth, you will say that you're lifting your community up. But I think the actions that you take now, when it comes to youth development, are going to speak for itself. So I just encourage you all, I beg you all, I plead with you all to now spend the funds, make the decisions that are going to benefit our kids now. Because we don't need any more children dying in our streets and I thank you so very much.
And your name for the record, sir?
James Ford, one eighty-four, Sir Scott Road. Thank you very much.
And the mayor's had technical difficulties, but he's now back with us.
Uh, thank you, James. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Shanice Allen. I live at one thirty Meredith Ridge Road, Athens. And I'm here today, um, out of, um, desperation right now. Um, how many more children, black children and black fathers have to be killed in our city? It is terrible and we're in a crisis. We actually need to stop and reset. There are enough funds that are in the city. There's enough money that has come through the city and coming, continue to come through. And we need to do something to support families. We're not going to be able to help the children without helping the families. That is a very important piece. So when you think about parents having to put jobs, pieces of jobs together, working three and four jobs in order to support their families, the children will not have one there, anyone there to support them. So they are taken to the streets. We need to do something and do something now. So I urge you to look at your budget and use the money wisely. And when I say use the money wisely, I mean use organizations that are already out here doing the work. Now, it is time out to continue using the same nonprofits that you've been using time and time again because they are only reaching a certain sector. We know that by what's going on right now. So I urge you to look at the budget because we will follow the budget. But we need you to put money into places that can help families and so that our families can thrive here and be successful and be a unengaged community. So please do that. I urge you. Thank you.
Thank you, Shanice.
Hello. My name is Tammy Foot and I live at one, at two-two-three February Street in District, District Two. And I really encourage you all to use the funds for the budget of this year for that area. The, um, I'm sorry, I haven't had enough to work, but there are, the, the East Athens Community Center that is over there should be utilized with fundings for the children over there instead of them being able to be on the I triangle. And the money that the police are being paid to sit on the I triangle with the people, money should be put into the area to develop programs to get them off of the I triangle instead of letting them sit there all night. Um, the funding that the city has should be put into programs to, for children that fourteen and over who can't go to camp should be developed for children to start, um, some type of learning as far as work and to further their education. I read somewhere where there is an apprentice program here in Clark County, just implemented in, um, black community District Two. The money is available, use it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Hey, my name is Kalisha Maddox. Um, I was born and raised in Clark County, being here, staying here for like thirty-four years and I moved away two years ago because I'm a single parent and I'm raising a sixteen and seventeen-year-old. Um, the gun violence brought me from, I moved to Oconee, but the gun violence that's going on in Clark County really hurt me so dearly because when I was their age, they had a KTS teen program that was orchestrated over there at the East Athens Community Center by Patricia Taylor that made me the person that I am today. Those programs are no longer available. These kids need guidance, they need structure. And if y'all have the funds to get it to them, please do. Because we are losing our men and our women out here to these streets. And I, at, at this point, it's, it's in y'all power to help us. We reaching out for help and we're going to continue to come out and reach for it. Y'all need to help us because we want our children to be living just like y'all are. So put y'all, it ain't, my children are living sixteen and seventeen, but my heart hurt for these people that are losing their kids. And if they had some money somewhere for these kids to go somewhere like the Grand Slam we had there and all these programs and they, they building these tennis, these tennis courts with two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars and what kid gonna touch it? Not one. Put the money where it need to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Kalisha.
Hello. My name is Sarah Jo Harris. I live in Columbus, Brookside. I'm calling to tell you because senior. I want to let people, let y'all know that no matter what decision you make, if you got a, if you know the Lord Jesus Christ, pray about the things you do before you make the decision. He'll guide your heart through the right thing every time. So all I can say, that over where I'm at, it's sad that every year our rent go up. And half a million of them making about, getting about a thousand dollars, maybe five hundred, and they still rent go up because they saying the state, the one raising the rent up. Not, not, not them. They, they the one doing, y'all the state doing. I don't believe that. Because we have worked all our life to get to HWEs. You got mamas, you got grandmamas, you got great-grandmamas, the ones up there. You think about the peoples out, your family. I feel your old grandmama paying almost eight hundred dollars, paying six hundred dollars out of her check that she worked and raised y'all on. You think about that. It's hard on us. Some of us in there barely making it, barely making it. Two hundred, three hundred dollars after you get paid, ah, be a pay the rent and stuff. That's wrong. But I had to do for a whole thirty days. Come on now. If it was your mama, your grandmama or your great-grandma, think about it. Would you want them to do that? No. So when you got this money, do the right thing for peoples out here, for the seniors. We need, that we need some help. We need more, uh, care. We need buses and things to come by and get us. We need more medicine. Paying for our medicines going up higher. Dentures are going up higher. They not paying for dental no more. They not paying for a lot of stuff for, to collect for, for us. And we just sitting here barely making. And so I just begging and praying that y'all would do the right thing. That's all I'm asking you to do. Just trust your heart and gut and pray about it and let the Lord guide you the right way. Because you go to his way, it ain't, you ain't gonna fail in downtime. You gonna do the, it gonna go in hundred, you going up, you ain't going down. So I'm gonna let you know that I just had to say something. And thank y'all for listening to me.
Thank you, Sarah Jo.
Hello. Okay, my name is Tamara Joyner. I'm here, a resident here of Athens, Georgia. And um I just wanted to make hint on one major point um that has been discussed today, but mainly uh affordable housing here in Athens. Um because a lot of issues do stem from people not having adequate residence. Everybody doesn't wanna live in public housing. Public housing has stipulations that actually, you know, sometimes hurt people. Or affordable housing is not available. So if they're, they, the only choices they have are to live in these neighborhoods because they can't afford to live anywhere else because all of the housing prices are ridiculous. You can't find a family home for a seven fifty, eight hundred, even nine hundred dollars anymore. You know, for a family of two, three, or whatever. They're renting rooms for that price for college students. So of course, the next landlord is gonna, if I can get that, why not? So then everything else is going up for UGA and their students, but there's no residential housing available for people who are working seven for seven twenty-five or twelve dollars or more. Fifteen dollars is great, but that still can't afford a thousand dollar rent if you have a child or two. And that's living. I don't have children. And I know it's hard for me, so I can just imagine. And the to see, like I say, around here, I've I've called around just to see and it's, you can't find housing. I mean, and everybody doesn't wanna go to Watkinsville, Oconee, because they have children here in the Clark County School District and they wanna keep them here for whatever reason, but they do. So uh just again, so I think so I try to help on the crime that's been talked about for the resources that have, that, you know, that have been talked about as well. Affordable housing in these areas, not outside of Athens, not pushing everything outside of Clark County, but here will be um a very good uh source, excuse me, or solution to help with the others re- um issues that are going on that have been discussed as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tamara.
All right, good evening, everyone. Um Broderick Flanagan, hope it's not out of order. I did submit public comment uh or input comment via the online comment form. But I'm also here today to speak um here in the chamber as well, if that's possible. But I definitely wanna support some of the sentiments that were shared earlier from other groups and other people that spoke. Um just to, you know, reiterate what some of the things they were saying. Um you know, employment and definitely youth development services are needed in this community to combat some of the negative effects that are happening um, you know, with the teens and the youth in our community. And I think um there's no better deterrent to some of those lifestyles than like giving somebody a good job or opportunity or clear pathway um for economic stability for themselves and their families. Um definitely also wanna speak to, um I was looking online, I saw the uh report that was put out by the Network for Southern Economic Mobility. And that report is very telling, you know, I don't know if the new commissioners have had a chance to see and look over that report. But should definitely look at it because it supports some of the work of the Black Lives Matter Resolution, which I couldn't find that resolution online either on our website, on ACC website. And I think that should be more accessible. But um it talks about disparities that's happening. And it's, in the report, it talks about forty percent of the youth growing up in this community experienced poverty to some degree. And so what that means though, what it translates to, um you know, is their parents are working because we have a low unemployment rate here in this community, right? So that means that their parents are working, but they're working in low-wage jobs. And so for our local government to be able to support the work of community organizations doing that, um I think is imperative and important for you all to partner with us and support that work in a substantial way, uh whether it be the Green Jobs Pipeline work, or whether it be work through Economic Justice Coalition, or any other, the other youth organizations that were represented here today. Um it doesn't need to be a zero-sum game um where we pick one or two organizations. All of these organizations need funding. All these organizations need to be supported in a substantial way because we're getting ready to have resources to be able to do so, um you know, in in many respects and regards. And so the way we divvy up those funds is gonna be important over the next few um, you know, weeks and and months. Um and and I want you to really consider that equity piece when you're thinking about that from who benefits from doing that work, who is is paid to do the work, and who is making decisions behind that work. Um because tho- those are important questions to ask when you are um supporting organizations that are trying to bring equity and economic stability, um especially, especially the racialized equity that's going on. Because a part of that report spoke to uh African-American students, it was like sixty-seven percent of kids, uh black students from ages five to seventeen were uh living in poverty. Um and and that's alarming compared to their white counterparts, it was like eight percent. And so those numbers, you know, we we need to address that. I I implore all of you to read that report. Thank you.
Thank you, Broderick. Appreciate it. Evening.
Evening. My name is Joanna Glenn. I live in Athens, Georgia. Then I'm just, I'm here, my son was just killed on May the first. And I, we just need something where we can get these youth and these gangs out these streets. And I'm just hurt, I just don't know what to say, but we need help. These kids need help.
I'm going to branch off on what she's saying. Um on her behalf, I am Ketravian's big sister. And we come from a neighborhood um where the poverty rate was sky-high as a kid. Um here I am, twenty-five. Luckily, I had a mom who was caring. She tried to work hard enough for all of us to keep us out of trouble. My brother, he took a path where he wanted to be an artist and just to prove to the community that he could make it out and be somebody who came from nothing. And when I say nothing, it just mean more than other kids had. And him being murdered, it just took a toll on everything because he was actually out here trying to make a change, even though um some of the stuff he rapped about, you know. Um but he still tried to make a change. A lot of kids looked up to him. People, like it it was even policemen who who would come up to my mom after this tragedy and was like, yes, we remember him. He was always respectful. So we just want the help to just get for a foundation, just for the youth, to get more policemen in the neighborhoods with all of the poverty. Um if it takes it, build gates for these communities because the gun, the gun situation is just too hard. And um my mama just having to go through this, he was only twenty years old on the way to a show. He he, and we got the call that he was supposed to sign a record deal, and now he doesn't have that opportunity. So if the gun violence is stopped or the the rate is fixed or just anything to help you understand that there is things for them to do outside of fighting, just go talk about it, learn how to do things that we used to do, counseling. I'm branching off on uh the community centers. Yes, we're redecorating Athens. I I love how the scenery looks, but we need the people, we need the funding, we need the help. The more people we get on our side, the more people can encourage other, all the kids to come together. So on that behalf of my little brother, we just want you guys to look at it just as him being a rapper is no different from him being a president. He still was an influence. And and it's, i- it's sad. And I, and I'm not saying anything to sound racist, uh but the, it is, it is ridiculous because a lot of the African-Americans are stuck in poverty because they can't get funding. Someone mentioned they had to move because of rent rate went up. It's hard to get jobs. People have kids. We're virtual. They don't have the money. So if they have the money, we can send the kids to community centers to give the parents more time to work or to get whatever they have done. And I'm gonna leave that to, if you guys could just, just please just help, just help. And I know my brother, what he wanted, and I'm speaking, I'm not just saying that because he's my brother. He always told my mom, if he was to get a record deal, he was going to give back to his community. He wanted to pay policemen to come out and do activities like they used to do, their activities, how the police used to come and speak to kids in school. They don't have that anymore. Let's speak about gun violence in school, speak about credit, speak about poverty. Poverty can lead to being a president. A lot of people who are, I'm sorry, I know I'm out of time, but a lot of people who are famous people or people who are known, a lot of them have come from nothing. But if if we just get the help, we know that my brother's foundation can take off and we want the foundation to spread here downtown Athens, Georgia. And thank y'all.
Thank you. Ma'am, I just need your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Coriana Glenn.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn.
I think that's all.
All right. Thank you for everybody who came out this evening. Uh we really appreciate your comments and your engagement with us. Uh I think there are a lot of heavy hearts in in this community, uh given the challenges that you've highlighted, given the trauma you've highlighted. Um for everybody who is looking at questions of budget expenditures, um that conversation will continue in earnest Thursday evening. So um please be tuning in at five-thirty uh Thursday evening for that conversation. Uh I wanna go ahead and very briefly uh turn things over to our county attorney, Judd Drake, um who is a a new member of our office, who he would like to introduce us to tonight.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Uh it's my pleasure to be able to introduce to everyone a Mr. Austin Jackson. Austin Jackson is uh our newest Assistant City Attorney. Austin uh attended the University of Southern Mississippi in undergrad and received uh his uh degree in English and followed that up, attended the University of Mississippi Law School. Uh he came back to Athens in two thousand sixteen uh and and went to work for the DA's office and uh worked up to to the point where he worked uh on the Special Crimes Unit for Child Abuse and Other Similar Crimes. And so we're very pleased, I'm very excited to to introduce Austin Jackson and give him just an opportunity to say a a a few quick words to the commission and the and the general public.
Thank you for the introduction, uh Judd. Uh just real brief, I'm really excited to get started working with you guys. Um looking forward to it, gonna hit the ground running, so.
Thanks, Austin. We welcome you to the team. We're really excited to have you here with us. And thank you, Judd. We appreciate it. Glad to know you're uh filling your office out with great folks. All right, everyone, um uh we tonight have some new business to consider under suspension of rules. So I do need a motion from a member of the commission for suspension of rules.
So moved.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards and a second from Commissioner Denson for suspension of rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to our first order of new business, which is an ordinance amending Code Section six dash three dash twelve uh regarding open containers. And this allows us to come into compliance with the recently signed state law allowing for uh two sealed liquor beverages to be delivered uh with every food entree under certain conditions. So do do I have that correct, uh Attorney Drake?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. And this is primarily just clar- clarifying that uh if a venue does sell, if someone does purchase uh a qualifying sealed container beverage uh from a a restaurant, that it won't violate our open container law.
Thank you. And and you have an ordinance to read, is that correct?
Oh, yes, sir. Give me one second, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, as it relates to open containers for the purpose of ensuring that food service establishments located in Athens, Clark County are not prohibited from selling mixed drinks for off-premise consumption in approved containers as recently authorized by Georgia law and for other purposes.
Thank you, Judd. Uh entertain a motion or any discussion.
So moved.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, motion for approval from Commissioner Wright. So I'm taking notes. Second from Commissioner Edwards. All right, any further discussion? All right, uh there is motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all. All right, uh second order of new business is a resolution of the Commission of Athens, Clark County, Georgia to approve the First Amendment to the Settlement and Covenant uh not pursuit agreements uh regarding bar owner litigation related to the hours of operation for alcohol licenses and for other purposes. And uh Attorney Drake, I know you were working as recently as today, so if you could just outline the the terms of this prospective settlement, that'd be helpful.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh so the borrowers have a a requested that the commission consider uh moving back the uh time for closing of bars from eleven-thirty to two AM, basically moving it back to what it originally was prior to the borrowers filing the initial lawsuit. Uh as a condition of doing that, the borrowers have agreed uh to work with the Clark County Health Department uh to promote uh and co-sponsor a vaccination clinic uh for a minimum of ten days leading up to the event uh date for the vaccination clinic, the borrowers will promote the event through their social media platforms and paper postings, paper postings in their respective venues. And on the event date, the borrowers and the Clark uh Clark County Health Department uh agree that they'll co-host a COVID-nineteen vaccination clinic at a third-party venue designated by the Clark County Health Department, such as the Class Center or College Square Pla- Plaza, at no cost to the borrowers. And uh in exchange, in a, in a, in a, in, as a, in exchange with the borrowers agreeing that condition, uh the commission would, after this action and amendment of settlement agreement, agree to approve an ordinance uh that will be effective on Thursday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, at twelve noon that changes the hours of operation currently set forth in the code of ordinances uh for the sale of uh alcoholic drinks by licensees of bars primarily from seven AM to eleven-thirty PM, uh back to from seven AM to two AM, and it would change the time limit for clearing patrons uh back from thirty minutes to forty-five minutes as as it originally was. And that's basically a synopsis of the event. I will note that the uh resolution itself uh has uh staff comments from the police department indicating that they feel like it'll be a benefit to to them moving back the time uh because you don't get the mixture of the college crowd downtown with the uh at the same time as the evening dinner crowd.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. And and just for uh the commission and the public, uh this resolution is then followed by a complimentary ordinance amendment on the agenda. So there would be two some, two uh two separate votes.
That's correct, Your Honor, Mr. Mayor. And I'll read that, the ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to hours of operations for alcohol licensees and for other purposes.
Thanks, Attorney Drake. Uh in- input or a motion?
Um I'd like to give some input. Actually, Melissa, if you wanna go first, that's fine.
Okay, um yeah, um this afternoon we got an um email from a downtown business owner, an owner of two businesses that that are impacted by this ordinance. Um and he asked us to um hold off on passing this return to two AM because, as this, these establishments no longer qualify for the employee retention tax credit um to the federal program. I really have not had any opportunity to study the impact of that, and I'm not sure that, that all of our downtown businesses have. But once we do remove all COVID restrictions from our local businesses, they no longer qualify for any federal assistance. You know, I know there are plenty of downtown bars that apply primarily on that late-night college crowd and may or may not be impacted by this return tax credit, depending on whether or not they report their employees. There are some businesses that benefit more from this tax credit. I just feel like we need a little bit of time to study this and do a little more outreach to our downtown businesses, find out precisely what the impact would be. I also really would like to get some kind of promise from UGA regarding vaccine requirements for students. Students are the primary, the primary client of those larger bars that have, you know, really packed it out and not really made any attempt to evade COVID transmission throughout this pandemic. So I, you know, I feel like there's a little bit more work to be done on this. I appreciate the idea of a vaccine clinic, but I feel like there's more work to be done, and I really, really want to get an understanding of the true financial impact and the repercussions of removing that qualification for these federal assistance programs once we remove all COVID restrictions.
Thanks, Commissioner, for your input. I, I will note that just over a week ago, along with Commissioners Thornton and Commissioner Myers, I met with about 30 bar owners or managers. And fortunately, in attendance that afternoon was Kevin Lang from Fortin Bentley Griffin, who's facilitated federal program support for a number of local businesses. And discussion surrounded the PPP program that you've probably been familiar with, the venue support program, as well as the Restaurant Revitalization Fund. But no businesses were taking advantage of the program that you've referenced just now, nor did Attorney Lang mention that in his, his summary of available federal benefits.
So none of the ones in attendance were? Or is there no?
Yeah, it, it, it was not, it was not referenced as a, as a route of support. I know Commissioner Parker was up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Wednesday, after speaking with about 12 people who work in the downtown bar areas, either as bartenders or, you know, accessory staff, a number of things came up with regards to just their, their ability to return to these jobs safely. I think the argument has been made a lot that this has impacted the workers of Athens, who have then been made economically precarious, relying on rent incentives, or, you know, being threatened with eviction, or just having trouble getting food on the table, and that this will be a boon to them. And a lot of those folks did support a return to 2 a.m., and I do want to be supportive of that as well on their behalf. But as a general process note, it is concerning to me that only the bar owners were met with regarding, you know, this, this settlement. And the people who are most impacted, while they can sit at home and collect profit from the businesses that they own, the people who are being exposed to COVID, the people that will have to walk home at 3:00 a.m. by themselves in the dark with cash tips on them and be susceptible to robbery or sexual harassment. The folks who, because they were paid under the table, were unable to get unemployment benefits throughout the pandemic as a result of the choices of the bar owners who we consulted, that their input was not really gathered in regards to this settlement, since they really honestly are the people who'd be impacted the most. I sent out a number of conditions that folks in this community had brought forward that would make them feel better about coming back to work, things like paid parking for staff at the end of football season, strengthening accessibility of, you know, understanding how they can report wage theft to the Department of Labor, $1 an hour hazard pay for bar staff for the remainder of the judicial emergency order. All things that they, that people impacted by this expressed interest in implementing. And I only heard back from Commissioner Hool. And I, you know, when Commissioner Link brought up this program that, you know, we might not have been aware of, that may, may have merited us taking more time to figure out ahead of moving with the settlement. I too was interested in having these, these requests addressed by the bar owners and the members of this body. We've had a number of people who've come forward tonight and talked about economic precarity and the way that it becomes an issue of public safety in our community. And I feel really disappointed that in both our approach to the settlement on the front end with who we contacted in terms of like a lobbying body, and in our discussions moving forward, that these people were completely left out of that conversation. And so I do want to respect that, you know, I guess having a job is better than not for a lot of these folks. And so, yes, a return to 2 a.m., increased tips, more hours is good, but in, in future, like, we really need to be listening to these folks who keep these businesses open. And I think that, in closing, this speaks to some of what came up earlier in the public comment about having a mechanism by which, or like a body that is organized, who we consult around workers' issues, similar to a Chamber of Commerce, so that this doesn't happen again.
Thanks, Commissioner. Other input or motion for the table?
I'm, I'm going to make a comment. I accidentally, well, I kind of stumbled onto that meeting. I did not realize that many bar, bar owners were assembled like that. And I didn't even understand the economic impact the bars and their employees were having. And I apologize if I overlooked Commissioner Parker's suggestions for the staff. I really think that this is another example of how we should engage community, because I did not even think about that in that perspective. And that's really one of my high priorities. And I hope that maybe, Mayor, there can be a follow-up conversation with the bar, bar owners and present some of Commissioner Parker's ideas, especially things that we could help with, like parking, you know, during games or whatever. But I hope, I'm going to support this because, you know, I gave, I'm not no downtown bar person, so it's not. But I did hear the concerns, but I would like to think those group of bar owners would sit down and take some of the ideas that Commissioner Parker recommended and try to implement. With that, I'm through, Mayor.
Ovita, is that a motion?
Oh, I make a motion.
I'll second.
I also want to really quick jump in and correct myself. Commissioner Wright also responded to my email on this matter, and I appreciate that a lot. And I want to say thanks, Commissioner Thornton, for recognizing that we, you know, moving forward, need to do things differently.
All right, motion from Commissioner Thornton. I apologize. Who's the second? Commissioner Wright. Thank you. Further input? Commissioner Hool.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll just say, I think now is a good time to move forward on moving the hours back. It makes sense from the, I think, fairly overwhelming input we've heard from owners and staff members, you know, even folks who like the hours staying earlier, they can do that at the bars that they choose to. But echoing Commissioner Parker's concerns, I think an avenue for us to explore is attaching more requirements to liquor licenses. And so I'd like to see us do that before we start renewing them next year, especially, you know, we've given folks breaks on the costs of those to get through COVID. But once we start issuing them again at the regular rate, you know, maybe adding some of these workers' rights stipulations, I think, is, is an important step we need to take to support the workers who really are the boots on the ground and really are most at risk. But tonight, I do support the approval.
Thanks, Commissioner Hool. Commissioner, is there anyone else before I circle back to Commissioner Link? Go ahead, Commissioner Link.
I would also suggest that, you know, part of, that we ask these bar owners to require vaccination proofs for entry into their bars after the currently designated last call hour. I mean, we need to provide some incentive, you know, to have these folks comply with vaccinations. You know, I feel like UGA is not doing enough. They're not requiring vaccines. They've removed their mask mandate. You know, we've got a very small percentage of our population vaccinated, and we really have no idea what that percentage is because we're not sure UGA students are even counted in, in this county. I just feel like we do not have the information to assure that these, these institutions are not super-spreader events and won't continue to be. And as long as this virus spreads in the community, it's going to mutate and become more contagious, more virile. We're seeing folks who are vaccinated coming down with COVID. How long is it before it spreads to, and becomes deadly COVID? So it's, I just feel like we don't have the information to remove restrictions completely in this community without some serious, serious vaccination incentives.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Edwards?
In light of this recent information about the employee retention tax credit concerns raised by restaurateurs, but, but also the fact that, you know, up till today, my impression was that these bar owners were coming to the table in good faith to host a vaccination event at their venue. You know, part, part of the negotiation here was that we would get these bars on board to address this public health crisis, not just make a Facebook post for something that DPH is hosting. So I, I move that we table this item.
I'll second that.
All right, substitute motion to table. Any further input?
Um, may I ask table till when? I, I'm supportive of the motion, just wondering if.
Do I create a date certain, Commissioner Edwards?
Table for 30 days.
Motion to table for 30 days.
And then I, and then I'll speak to my motion just briefly, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think 30 days would give us time to get in touch with the restaurateurs who are going to be affected by the discontinuation of this employee retention tax credit. Also going to help us negotiate maybe a little bit more with the bar owners, you know. As I mentioned, up, up till tonight, my impression was they were going to be hosting vaccination events at their venues, you know, to help vaccinate their employees. Now I'm reading the settlement agreement, it's turned into making a social media post. So this, this just falls well short of, of my expectation here. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers. Muted, Commissioner.
I'm happy to go ahead and reopen as presented here tonight. Perhaps I'm simplifying this, but we have business owners downtown who have businesses that are open presently to 12 o'clock. There are people in them already. We're talking about returning them to their normal working hours. They're the only ones left in the, you know, community who are taking on this burden. Yes, they're, they're students. But I'm, I'm sure it just doesn't seem reasonable here to put on any extra burdens right now. I'm sure, let's go on and discuss some of these further down the road. But I am not in support of tabling this and would like to go ahead and vote on this.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Wright?
Thank you. Just to show my support for the original motion, but I also agree, and I think I put that, Commissioner Parker, I, I know I emailed it to you and I don't reply all, but I hope I did on this one, is that I think that the improvements that we're talking about, whether it's that our music venues or nightclubs stay open until 2 a.m. and bars are midnight, any of those changes that we want to do or health and safety issue improvements. We had talked a lot about that stuff in Legislative Review Committee before the pandemic. It included letting the bar staff having lessons on how to recognize sort of binge drinking as well as sexual abuse or kind of things. But again, what I'm talking, what I'm wanting to get to is that we need work to work seriously, whether it's a committee assignment before the next license renewal in the fall, if we want to make some adjustments for improvements of that. And this affects all of the county right now. And it's not just bars that are downtown that are affected by this early close. And again, anybody can close whatever time they want. So we're not saying they have to stay open till 2 a.m., but the ones that want to can. And I, I would welcome added LRC committee meetings to help address this before the liquor licenses go out, if that would be a solution that could capture some of these great ideas that, that we're kicking around that don't, we can't really insert at this point in time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thornton?
You know, I guess, again, I, I don't know how I overlook Commissioner Parker's suggestions, but I think that this could also be a, an assignment for the Inclusion and Diversity Office. Inclusion and diversity is just not race. It's, it's, it's the differences. And maybe this is something that our, our director could, could also look at as well as LRC. So I want to, I want to put out some positive suggestions to a very sticky situation, because it does need to be addressed, and that might be another avenue with our Inclusion and Diversity Office. That was my only comment, Mayor.
Thanks, Commissioner. Manager Williams?
Commissioner Thornton, if I could, and we're talking about the hours of the bars, so I may have missed the connection on the Inclusion Office. Would, would you tell me, because I just want to understand specifically what you were thinking that they could assist with here?
I was talking about Commissioner Parker's suggestions.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Regarding the employee support. Yes, okay. Commissioner Parker, then Commissioner Link.
Thanks. While, just kind of thinking out loud here, while I was originally supportive of the substitute motion before my Commissioner Edwards, because I am very, very eager to ensure some sort of protections, both economic and literal, physical for the workers, I think that Commissioner Wright brings up a really good point, that we need to work towards something more permanent. The solutions that I brainstormed with folks I engaged with were temporary and, you know, would expire when this pandemic is over, when these problems with wage theft, with safety, with, you know, all, all these other things will, will outlast the current, you know, crisis that we're in. And so if we could use this moment to sort of start thinking about, as she said, before the next round of liquor licenses go out, what kinds of things we could put in place to ensure that more lasting support, that would be great. And so I, I do think I will ultimately support the original motion.
Commissioner Link and then Commissioner Denson.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to Commissioner Edwards' substitute motion that venues that require vaccination proof be allowed to return to the 2 o'clock closing time. Then venues that require vaccination proof for anyone entering the facility after 11:30 to current closing time.
No, I'd, I'd rather just, let's just vote on tabling. You know, everybody, I think, has spoken for or against. I, I feel uncomfortable, you know, creating a settlement negotiation behind the rail here. I, I just, let's vote on tabling for 30 days, and then we can figure it out. And then we'll vote on the original motion.
Let me get Commissioners Denson and Hool, and then if everybody's ready, we'll go ahead and vote on the substitute motion first. Go ahead, Commissioner Denson.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, this, this is, this is a, a tough thing we're going with here. And I will say, like, with most of my constituents, I've definitely heard from a lot who work in the service industry. And they've been telling about how they've been, these are working-class folks who work at a bar or, you know, or work in the bar somewhere, and that they've been, they've been struggling. I mean, a bit, especially with how difficult it's been to be able to get unemployment lately. I think we've all heard complaints about that. You know, so I think with that, you know, that I think I'm supporting the original motion, but mainly also because of, and, and this, and I want clarification before I decide on this, but to the attorney, if you can speak to this, any stipulations that we put into this would just be part of the settlement and would only affect those bar owners who are part of this suit, right? Not all the bars throughout town, but just. Not all the bars throughout town, but just this very small number, correct?
That's, that's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. So, so these stipulations, not only would they be temporary, but they would be limited to a very small number of bars. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Thanks, Commissioner Hool.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I wanted to clarify, when will this take effect if we approve it tonight?
If it was approved tonight, it would take effect in two days, Thursday, the 20th.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, there's, there are opportunities to leverage a moment to try to make something happen that's long overdue. And there are opportunities to do that where it might do more harm than good. And I think right now with the need for people to get back to work, they would do more harm than good. And I don't, I don't think it would ultimately be effective, especially with how much the governor's orders and, you know, the CDC guidelines and everything have kind of kneecapped our ability to really mandate anything. A lot of what we're talking about, we can't really enforce as a mandate, you know, so without really taking through, without thinking through thoughtfully how to go about enforcement of anything we put in place. Anything we would build into this would, I think largely be symbolic anyway. So I'm in favor of us moving forward at this time. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could go ahead and call roll on the substitute motion first. And the, I think the primary on the substitute motion was Commissioner Edwards.
Edwards. Edwards.
Andy votes no. I'm sorry, were you calling me?
Edwards.
Yes, table.
Sorry, 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 Russell.
Sorry, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Myers.
No.
Thornton.
No.
Andy.
No.
Devon Ford.
No.
Parker.
No.
Link.
Yes.
Wright.
No.
Denson.
No.
Hool.
No.
Two yes, a no.
All right, thank you. All right, we return to the original motion to approve the resolution. Commissioner Thornton was the primary, so if we could have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk on the primary motion.
Thornton.
Thornton. Yes, yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Devon Ford.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Link.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Denson.
Yes.
Hool.
Yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. As referenced earlier, we also need to vote on the corresponding ordinance, which has already been read by the attorney. Do I get a motion for the ordinance vote?
So move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Wright and second from Commissioner Hool. All right. Madam Clerk, if you could do roll call vote, please, beginning with Commissioner Wright.
Wright.
Yes.
Denson.
Yes.
Hool.
Yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Thornton.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Devon Ford.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Link.
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate it. All right, motion carries. All right, next order of business is a model for disposessory protection in partnership with the magistrate court. Funding is not attached to this, but a model of collaboration between unified government and magistrate court, which will subsequently seek prospects for funding in a future vote along with the scale of funding. So Commissioner Denson.
Mayor. And just for the public, I think there was a little bit of confusion about this program with some other programs that are out there. You know, Project Reset is a program that will help us curb evictions and keep people in their homes, specifically people who are actually in the middle of a disposessory hearing. The people who are not only at risk, but they are literally being evicted. And Project Reset works by, you know, working in tandem with the magistrate court, nonprofit housing organizations and legal aid organizations so that settlements with these landlords can be reached and in return, people get to stay in their homes and the eviction is dismissed, along with any past rent and fees. That whole part of, the legal part of the eviction being dismissed and past rents, past due rent and past due fees being dismissed is unique to this program among any other that we have funded or that is available right now in Athens Clark County, including state programs. And another thing that I think is extremely unique is that this program is brought to the people who need it. It doesn't require somebody who's having, who's struggling and is back doing their rent, researching this program online, finding it, finding the right place to call, filling out the application. It doesn't require any of that. They just have to go and do what they have to do anyways, which is provide an answer to the magistrate court. And when they do that, this program is offered to them. You know, I think any of us who've been working with folks who have been facing eviction know that they're really, really struggling to just, to get by and to get through this terribly life-ending situation. And the last thing that they have, they can be really be doing sometimes is researching online to find the best programs and have applications that take weeks for them to come through. As we talked about last week, Project Reset is not, is not intended to all replace those other programs. Is intended to work with them. We should be taking a massively holistic approach, keeping people in their homes and helping people in this pandemic, but also helping to stop evictions in the first place. We realize that state programs don't deal with the homelessness situation here in Athens adequately. That's why we are talking about, you know, having an independent agency be funded with local dollars to deal with homelessness, along with tons of other programs. The DCA has like a dozen programs to deal with homelessness, but they don't, they don't do it all. We need to be doing everything we can here. And thankfully, in the last week, UGA Law's pit program and their mediation program have both, so they're excited to find a way to work with this program, um, and be part of it, which is going to make our money go even further and make it even more efficient. And, and again, with the funding, I don't care how we fund this, y'all. This is not some political thing I'm chasing after. I've been talking to folks who are being evicted, they're, they're at their wits end, just trying to stay in their homes. They're not being, they're being, we are evicting people right now. So we need to have something in this program that's keeping people in their homes. And that's all this is. I don't care where that funding comes from, American Rescue Fund. It seems obvious because like within one of the first sentences about it, it talks about using that money for stopping evictions. But if we want to work with DCA to bring in their money, use their money, awesome. Use some of their resources, awesome. Let's do it. Totally.
Denson, I'm going to move on to some other input and then I'll come back to you.
At the end of that, I'll make a motion for us to accept.
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Denson, a second from Commissioner Parker. Any additional input?
Um, if I could just add some small input in addition to my second. I was very curious when the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Rental Assistance Program was brought up and did some research on it, just looking at their website for, just to see what the overlap is between this and program and that. And I think it still stands, you know, reading over that, the money is distributed directly to landlords, et cetera, but it does not guarantee that people are able to stay in their homes. They can get assistance now, but six months from now, five months from now, next month, there's no guarantee that if they still are having hard times, they won't be put out on the street. And that is what is very unique about Project Reset and why I've supported. And can, and I'm very, you know, hopeful that we can pass this project concept tonight. I'd also like to say that I'm looking back through my emails and I think I got my first email on this topic, January 11th, 2021. And in those ensuing months, and all of our, all of you are on this email. So in the ensuing months, we've had lots of opportunity for public comment. I've spoken a lot with my constituents about this opportunity and I know other commissioners have. And so I think that we need to move forward based on the public input we have received and do better to engage the public in future if not everyone has taken advantage of the many months we have had to solicit that input from people. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was fortunate to be able to speak with our regional DCA rep today about the funds that they have available to them. She indicated to me that they are not presently working in magistrate court, but she does understand the significance of that link and is interested in exploring the prospect of a connection between the existing DCA funds, which are significant, and the magistrate court venue that I think has been identified as a key place where, where people can either face enormous challenge in eviction or find some resolution. So I'll certainly update everybody on this body and in the public as that potential link evolves. I've got, speaking of links, I've got Commissioner Link and then Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, I support this program. I think that, you know, we've had some clear input from some very well-informed folks working in eviction law who have stated the merits of this program, particularly in that, you know, it works with the courts and it avoids folks getting that black mark on their record. Often people who've been evicted have a really hard time finding home down the line, whether or not they have the money to pay for it. So, you know, making sure that they don't go through that legal process and have that, that black mark that follows them around, you know, for years, if not the rest of their lives, is ideal, you know? And other organizations have funds that we've given them through CARES or they have other resources for funds, but it's rarely the large amount of funds that folks who find themselves in court need. And we did hear that testimony from Judge Barron and Judge Makin. And the fact that those two judges came to speak with us in our work session, to me says a lot about their support for the program and their willingness to work in this program. So I think we have had plenty of evidence of the merits of this program.
Thanks, Commissioner. I've got Commissioner Wright and then Commissioner Edwards and then Commissioner Thornton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that information from the regional DCA. And so when you spoke with that person, did they sort of imply that now that there's new money, additional money for DCA, that that is going to allow them to do the expansion and be looped into the magistrate court process as this reset implies?
She certainly understood the significance of magistrate court as a venue for engagement. She didn't say they're poised to do that or anything of the sort, but she did say she wanted to engage with the DCA commissioner for the state around this question. And I forwarded her the agenda material that we're currently discussing.
Okay, thank you for that because I think that, I'm not going to repeat what Linda Lloyd said today, that I thought when she spoke to us, that she pretty much captured the way that I feel about this and that, that DCA's pot of money is the right way to go for this. And I expect that their expansion will go this way versus us finding a third party to do that connectivity. And I just wanted to point out in the agenda meeting and pointing to Commissioner Denson inviting us to a meeting in January, I think that we all know for open records that no more than three of us can like be in a meeting with decision-making point of content like this. And that's why we had it as a work session so that we could all learn about that last month at the same time. But we've all got to make sure that we don't have side meetings that are not aligned with open records. But I'm not in support of what could be a $9 million project with the funds that are coming our way with the American Recovery or whatever funds. I can't imagine where else we would have $9 million in the timeline to go with this. So that's the input I wanted to bring. And I appreciate those who came forward in the community and Linda Lloyd spoke to me on that.
Thanks, Commissioner. I've got Commissioner Edwards and then Commissioner Thornton.
Thank you. I, I, I think it is clear to me from the agenda report, this motion on the floor will be to give staff direction to explore how a new diversion court, basically, just like the Family Drug Court, the Juvenile, the Juvenile Court, Family Violence Court, Veterans Court. Athens has been a leader in alternative courts development. And I think it's important that this concept attacking disposessaries and evictions include our local magistrate court, like how Gwinnett County includes their magistrate court because of one key reason, that by including the magistrate court, you're able to secure a binding settlement between landlords and tenants that will allow tenants to remain in their property for a time certain according to a settlement. So all these other programs swirling around that provide funds for tenants, this is the only one I know of that is specifically involving a magistrate court, which will create a binding judgment, a binding settlement agreement to help tenants stay in their homes. This plan right here that we're voting on tonight does not allocate any money directly at this time for such a project. It simply gives staff the go-ahead to look at how we might implement a protective program that will create binding settlements with our magistrate court. Perhaps that concept will include DCA. Perhaps that program will include American Rescue Funds. I don't know yet. But I do know that I want there to be the protection of the court when these settlements are entered into by landlords and tenants and this concept provides that key protection. So I support exploring the concept. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Commissioner. I've got Commissioner Thornton and Commissioner Myers.
I had this wonderful speech all laid out, but I think I'm going to just have to backtrack a little bit. First of all, I want to tell my, the commissioners that worked on Reset. I see the work you put into it. I do wish we were all talking about it at the same time. I thought this was going to be a conversation that was going to come up at the last retreat where we could have talked in a quorum session. Now, when Reset was introduced, DCA did not have this funding. So that might have made a little bit of sense for, for us to look at Reset or any other eviction program. I have, I've mentioned to this body that I have talked to, including the families I've talked to with the recent killings at the district attorney's office. I know I have talked to over 150 folk about the American Rescue Plan. And the only thing this community wants is to be involved in our decisions and be a part. The problem for me with Reset, y'all are, because it does not have no dollars. And from my past experience as a commissioner, when we say it's a concept, the next thing I have experienced, it becomes the actual program. That's a problem. I have reached out to the county manager's office about the monies that we gave out before. And he explained there were some questions that, that they didn't have the answers to because I guess I just, I just kind of went, well, they weren't asked in advance and I totally get that. But the thing that bothers me with that report was two of the agencies were not reported in that 1,318 number. And the case filed for disposessaries was 1438. So if we wanted to work with the court, I think that we had a, a good model if we, if we just would have kind of tweaked it together. So I'm not discounting Reset. I'm saying that it was brought to us before we had another option. It was brought to us and now we're asked to be considered when we have not gotten the outcomes and the, of the monies we gave away from CARES. It addresses renters, but we have folk who own. It addresses renters, but we have folk who own homes that are losing their mortgages, and we don't have a plan for them. So are the renters more important than the people who are trying to maintain their homes? We have folk that are having problems with predatory lending. This is a much bigger concept. My colleague, when we talked a few months ago, it was that fiery conversation, one of my colleagues used the word slapdash. This looks like a slapdash moment for me. And when you heard those people speak today and you were not moved, if your hearts were not tugged, that this money could be used to address some of the, and it's interesting that now we're not saying it's the American Rescue Plan money, which a week ago, that's what we said. So if it's not coming from the American Rescue Plan money, I'm good with it. But I don't want us to start picking that apart when we have all of these questions that have not been answered. And who knows? We may talk to DCA and they may want to work with our magistrate court. So I am prepared to, I see Commissioner Link's hand up, but I am prepared to make a substitute motion based on the concerns I heard today from the people most of you don't even know. So I'm ready, I'll let, I'll make my substitute motion in a minute, Mayor.
Okay.
I also talked to Beth Evans from DCA, and she is willing to work with us.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'm going to move on to Commissioner Myers and Hool, and then I'll circle back to those I've spoken with already.
Maybe my question is one of clarification. I'm looking here in the facts and issues, and it says, "Number 10, in collaboration with the magistrate court, staff will develop a more refined program recommendation and budget estimate to serve this intended outcome. This will be provided for the mayor and commissioner for their review and discussion in advance of upcoming meeting on the American Rescue Acts funds." Does this preclude us using, working with the DCA? Could that, would that, I would imagine that, that based on what we know here, that that would be part of developing a program and reaching out to DCA to see how we could be using it and using their funds. It would seem to be, it seems like Mayor Gertz made a first step in that direction. So would that be part of a, of developing a more refined program and reaching out to DCA and the Department of Legal Services as well that Commissioner, maybe I'm getting the wrong name, but Commissioner Davenport talked about the last time?
I'll let Manager Williams address that.
Yes, Commissioner Myers, we would look for, you know, to DCA to find out what's possible. I know some of y'all have already had those inquiries, but, you know, given the direction from the commission, we would investigate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Hool, and then I'll circle back to some others.
Thank you, Mayor. Is June 3 the meeting that we're expecting to get this back at? Another like two American Rescue Plan meetings, the first one, June 3?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm really grateful that people came out to speak tonight. We, as an institution and individuals, do need to do more to keep working and do better at engaging our community. Tonight's not the first time we've heard from folks who catch wind of things once it's coming up for a vote, even sometimes for things that we have been discussing among this body for a long time prior. So I'm encouraged by commitments and actions I've seen among many of my colleagues and staff to try to up our game, to be more active and proactive with that engagement. But I also think we need to move forward with this tonight. We know this program works. We've seen it work elsewhere in Georgia. We've had time to consider and discuss this. It was first brought up in agenda setting a month ago, then discussed again last week at the work session in these public meetings as a full body, but Commissioner Denson has been urging us to act on this since January. There is broad and vigorous support from many, pretty much all the key players who are experts in the field and who work on housing and evictions day in and day out. That includes all three of our magistrate court judges and many attorneys, including attorneys from Georgia Legal Services. We've had the attorneys based in Athens who work for GLS writing to us as recently as today, pleading for us to move forward on this. You know, there was a question raised about why renters? They make up over half our population. They're in the most precarious situation. They're dealing with the most rapidly rising cost of housing. Property taxes have gone up because property values have gone up for some, but rents have gone up 33% across the board in four years. And, you know, especially important for renters is if they get evicted, if they have an eviction on their record, you know, we have examples from countless agencies with a years of rent upfront, a full year of rent to try to pay for a client to get into a place and landlords don't take them. So really, this is not only about keeping them in the house they're in now, but it's keeping that eviction off their record. And, you know, there's a need. Evictions have been happening this whole time, you know, despite all the efforts we and many organizations have made, the need is just greater than we can keep up with. And so even with all the other programs that do exist, there's evictions happening now. They've been happening, and we're expecting them to balloon greatly in the coming months. So I think we need to do this today, and then we come back in June to allocate the funding and hammer out the final details, having that broader discussion about the rescue plan funding and deciding whether to use some of that for this. That is what I anticipate using to pay for this. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Davenport, I apologize, did you have your hand up a minute ago?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I don't know why this is hard for me because I want to help people stay in their homes. Just, and thank you for the new information from DCA that they have an extra pot of money. But, but one of the reasons why I didn't attend the January meeting, because I did get the email and the invite, was the fact that, you know, Georgia Legal Services currently has a program that's been helping people. They have helped several of my constituents in District One, you know, to stay in their homes, and they have the, like I said, the wraparound service as well to, you know, give people the benefits and give people, you know, you know, job placements and stuff like that. And I just think, you know, each situation is, each situation may be the same, but they're, you know, they're all unique when it comes to someone being evicted from, you know, their apartment or home. And the other caveat that people, you know, there are a lot of mom and pops landlords out there, you know, and when people don't pay their rent, you know, they can't pay the mortgage or the property taxes or pay their bills. So it's not just the tenants, you know, it's also some of the landlords. I'm not talking about the big ones, but now there are a lot of, you know, mom and pop renters out there. And the main reason why I keep supporting or keep stating that, you know, Georgia Legal Services or promoting their services is the fact that they individualize each situation to each, you know, each other advocate and walk people through the steps. They help them out, they provide those wraparound services, and they're in existence now. They can get help right now. Who cares with this? We got to go through, you know, with the Project Reset, which is a wonderful program and supported by, you know, our magistrate court and, you know, as other commissioners have stated, some of the key players. But it's going to be probably June or July before, you know, Project Reset is, takes effect. We got to provide funding, we got to find partners and, you know, get the ball rolling. But I don't know why I'm so conflicted on this. I want to support Project Reset, and I think I am going to, more than likely, I probably will support Project Reset, but at the same time, listening to the people who spoke out today, we can, we're pretty much duplicating services that are already in existence today. We could use that fund to go to youth development. We could use those funds to help some of the programs to alleviate gang violence and some assaults that these residents are having upon, in their homes. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anywho, interested in the second round? I saw earlier Commissioner Link, Commissioner Thornton, Commissioner Denson, and Hool.
Yeah, I just want to point out that we are not voting on Project Reset. We are voting on a program concept with respect to a partnership with the magistrate court to provide relief during the disposessary process with the intent of allowing residents to remain in their housing through a disposessary of alternative eviction program. The details of this program don't exist. We're calling out that as a model, but we are creating our own program. And that program, you know, very well could work with DCA. It very well could work with Georgia Legal Services. The uniqueness of this program is that it works with the magistrate courts and prevents that actual eviction. You know, folks who get to that eviction point, many of them have already gone through those other alternative programs. I've already sought funding, you know, that have gotten to the point where they are actually getting evicted. You know, I'd be willing to, a friendly amendment that in the funding source, you know, we say Funding Source American Rescue Act, I would ask that we amend that to say American Rescue Act and other sources. So if Georgia Legal Service, or if the Department of Community Services, DCA, has a pot of funding that they could make available, so we could turn to that too if there are grants out there, whatever, we can expand the source of that funding. And with the understanding that this is a program that is yet to be created, we are just giving staff the go-ahead to come up with this concept. And in forming, in forming this program, there's plenty of opportunity for public input. That should be part of the process in hammering out the details of this program. So, yeah, I would ask that staff do the outreach to those community organizations and in those communities that experience high eviction rates, to get that community and put on the details. We're just voting on a concept.
Thanks, Commissioner.
I would accept that second, friendly amendment as the secondor.
Yep, same. I, that is the intent. So yes, thank you, Commissioner Link, for making that intent clear.
Thank you. Friendly amendment accepted.
Mr. Mayor, in the motion on the floor, a substitute motion to deny this concept?
I don't believe there's a.
I was going to, I just announced I was going to make.
Was that not seconded?
No.
Okay, so we're back to the original motion to accept the concept?
Yeah, we even filled out the original motion.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yes, absolutely. Commissioner Thornton, Denson, Hool.
I, again, think that, and my amendment is going to be before, to put this on hold until we have a work session with DCA, the same way we did with the work session we had before. My concern is, everybody's talking about there's no dollars attached, but you look in the flagpole, Commissioner Denson is quoted $200,000. We get an agenda that says up to $9 million. You know, I don't know about you guys, but those are dollars to me. And when you say there's no dollars attached, we're not quite being realistic about that. That's, that's a problem. And when we do not have a clear report on past monies that we use for rental assistance and we hold no one accountable, that's another problem. Now, I think I'm about the only commissioner that has really been keeping up with this American Records, American Rescue Plan. But I do send you guys information when I get it. And we are talking about, and I know where you're going to go with this when I say it, but this money is earmarked for the least of us, people of color, and communities of color that has been hit by COVID. Now, I know what whoever speaks after me will probably say, well, we're going to be serving people of color. Yeah, but it's not usually the people of color serving the people of color. And that is, that's how we have normally done business. Now, I, you know, let's just call it like it is. There are no, there is no real representation of people of color being in these responsible decision-making positions. And that's what those people that I've met with, they want to talk to you about this. We discriminate amongst ourselves when we think we're doing good. Now, if this is not going, if we're just creating a concept, we could also ask the manager's office to give us a concept with DCA and even include the magistrate court if we're not doing this for any political agenda, if we're doing this to try to get the best solution. I didn't say Reset was bad. I said now we got another alternative and we need to look at both of them and tweak, and then we could even look at what we did with the CARES money. But you guys keep trying to make decisions for folk, we guys, we guys, that, that are not included. And like I said, no, those aren't your kids that have been killed on the streets. And y'all can't feel it, but I'm, can I, no, I think, I'm going to go ahead and make my substitute motion, Mayor, after Commissioner Hool, so we can get through with this.
I've got Commissioner Hamby, who hasn't spoken yet, and then Commissioners Denson and Hool.
Oh.
And then Myers.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Thornton, if you want to go ahead and make your substitute motion, that might help move us along, I guess, or not.
Yes, make it. If you're going to make it, make it. Let's go.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards. I would like to make a substitute motion and instruct staff to investigate collaborating with the Department of Community Affairs for rental assistance, using their funds and alleviating the local funds that would be attached with the American Rescue Plan dollars allocated for Athens, so we could address other issues such as homelessness, youth violence, youth programs, anti-gang activities with those funds. That's my motion.
I'll second that, Mayor, but I'll add a comment to that. And I'm seconding it for, for, for a few reasons. And one, I, you know, certainly understand Project Reset, but also understand what DCA is doing. And the motion is the way I hear Commissioner Thornton saying it is, you know, Gwinnett and some of the other counties that were over 200,000 and plus, they were, they got a lot more money than we did for the first go-around in CARES. And they were able to start some programs that we didn't have the funds for, but we made, we made, we did good with what we got as far as, as far as helping with rental assistance. The DCA program, the way it, the way it is set up is very similar to what everybody's talking about as far as helping with rent and helping with landlords, helps up to 12 months rent, possibly even 15 months rent for those that are eligible. So I think, I think it's, you know, we've got, we've got a limited amount of dollars. It seems like a lot of money, but as we, as we well know from our last budget discussion, we all have some ideas about how to, how to use general fund dollars. But when we come to the, I'm going to start calling it the Athens Recovery Money instead of the American Recovery Funds, but Athens Recovery Funds, so that, so that those do stay in Athens, in our community, and we utilize those dollars that are available from DCA to do exactly what everybody's talking about here. And, 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 you know, we obviously have some, some folks who are talking to DCA representatives. It sounds like DCA wants to work here in Athens. They've got the money to do it. Because one of the problems I can see happening, you know, it's like us here. If we don't utilize the monies that come to us from the federal government, then we have to turn it back in. And I imagine DCA may be in the same situation, and they probably want to be able to help us utilize those dollars that they have so that they don't have to turn it back over to the federal government. And, and that's the way this, that's the way the situation works, is you've got to use dollars or the federal government wants it back. In fact, I can understand that. They just don't want the money sitting around and not being utilized in the rental assistance way that they have. So, and also, for the second reason, that, that I think is important, and I think is important is staff's time. We're asking staff to develop a whole program when there's already a program that exists with DCA, to tap into that and see how we can make that a good partnership with us. So, so I think, I think being mindful of staff's time, being mindful of how we spend our Athens Recovery Dollars here in our community are the reasons why I support the substitute motion. So thanks for your time. I'm going to find my cord because it seems like my battery's running low.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Denson, Hool, and then Myers.
Mayor, because I don't want us to lose focus of what, well, I, I, I won't be supporting the substitute motion as I'm unclear of exactly what is being asked for. I heard there would be a work session. I'm not sure. for. I heard there would be a work session. I, I'm not sure exactly. Yeah. But, um, again, I support the original motion, uh, because this is a unique program that does two things, the DCA program, nor any of the other programs that we have funded does, which is goes to the people who need it or actively being evicted as they are in the magistrate court facing dispossession and having to provide an answer. Um, the other thing it does that the other programs does not do is that it, it actually solidly legally solidifies that they get the state, the person gets to stay in their home, not get evicted. It ends the dispossession hearing. It eliminates all back rent and back fees as part of the agreement. And again, as the term is, resets the tenant so they can stay in their home. Those two things are very unique, and they are very integral to stopping evictions. Um, and again, we need to be doing everything we can. If, uh, I don't think we need to do $9 million. Actually, I saw that in that agenda report. Again, that was just like a historic item. I don't think that's actually what we brought for us. I think that is more than we needed. Uh, as I was quoted in the flagpole, uh, when asked about it, I, I, I said, and I quote from the article, I would like to see at least $200,000 to start with. Um, that was a, an educated number from having many, many conversations with magistrate court judges and staff about what was immediately needed. Um, so I would like us to go ahead and do this. And again, like for the renters, I know, and Commissioner Hool brought this up a little bit, 62%, this is from the GIC report, 62% of Athens rents, 62%. And 31%, uh, so basically half of those people, 31% of Athens is actively rent burdened as the federal government designates it. That more than a third, more than at least more than 30% of their income goes to rent, they are rent burdened. Um, now, again, would love to see us, uh, look into getting a mortgage relief program. I would completely support that. We need to have a holistic approach with lots of different programs going on here. Let's, let's fund them all. Let's put this on place. And again, the other thing I wanted to point out very clearly, as Commissioner Link said, what we're voting on right now, this is very important because I think we've had a lot of different things said, what we are voting on right now has no funding attached to it. I would like to have funding attached to it, but it doesn't. It has no funding attached to it. This is to create a concept so that we can actually start a program, have it standing up, and then fund it in the future. No funding associated with it. And that funding could come from the American Rescue Fund Act, or come from DCA, general fund, it can come from almost anywhere. But that is what we're voting on. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Hool, then Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just kind of wanted to clarify three things. The first is regarding that, uh, point on landlords that I heard Commissioner Davenport raise. Um, I'd like to quote an email we got from a Georgia Legal Services lawyer who's among the many who are passionately advocating us acting on this. It says, quote, "Project Reset is, in reality, a cash assistance program for landlords that has crucial secondary benefits for tenants. It is a voluntary program by which landlords can take or walk away from assistance entirely at their discretion. This could be a lifeline for truly struggling mom and pop landlords who are in such financial straits that they risk losing their investment property to foreclosure." So, you know, basically, this is helping those exact landlords that we do probably care about most, you know, those most in need first. Um, and that crucial secondary benefit is also very crucial. It's for tenants that will not instead end up out on the streets. They don't have an eviction on their record severely damaging their ability to find housing in the future. The second thing is, I think Commissioner Link put it well, you know, we're indeed voting tonight to move forward, but we're not hurriedly solidifying anything tonight. A no vote tonight only pushes things off even further, instead of giving staff the clear direction that they've told us they need, to then come back to us with a more complete and specific proposal, proposal with funding identified. I think that will, of course, take into account a lot of what we've discussed tonight about the DCA program. Um, and so the third thing is, you know, so long as there are people still in eviction hearings for failure to pay, there is still a need. Somehow, people are still ending up in court, getting evicted for failure to pay, and this program would alleviate that. So the longer we push this off, the more people will be unnecessarily evicted. Please, let's take action tonight, and then we can solidify the specifics in June.
Got Commissioner Myers and then Edwards before I circle to Commissioner Thornton for a third round.
Um, I would like to move forward with whatever we're doing on this tonight. And I'm wondering if I could clarify the friendly amendment that Commissioner Link added in, um, with wording that I've taken from the agenda report that would, and as it's presently stated, it says, "The mayor and commission approve a project concept with respect to partnership with the magistrate court to provide relief during the dispossession process with the intent of allowing residents to remain in their housing through a dispossession alternative and eviction program." That's what it says. I'd like to add on there, if this is what Commissioner Link said, "And include potential third party, third party partners, including DCA and Georgia Legal Services and varied funding sources," so that we could include, we, we have make specific reference to, um, investigating other third party partners in here and different sources, which my assumption is that would be included in there, but this would put it into writing. Commissioner Link, is that what you intended?
Yes. I mean, that's what I, I garnered from the agenda report that, you know, by approving a concept, we were giving staff the go ahead to explore all these other outlets. Um, the, the main intent of my amendment was to ensure that, um, you know, the funding sources thought would go beyond the ARP funds. But I'm happy to include the language that you state about the specific other partners, um, as long as it's made clear that the funding, um, could go beyond ARP.
Yes. And so this is to include and include potential third part in the plan, potential third party partners, because I assume there has to be some, including DCA and Georgia Legal Services and varied funding sources.
And Commissioner Myers, just as a process question, um, I, 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 I think that everybody's on the same page about the amendment to the primary motion. It is the substitute motion that's on the floor right now. So, uh, we, we, we would return to the primary motion after a vote. But, um, but, but I do believe that, uh, the, the language that you noted is kind of what is in everybody's mind as the amendment that was earlier discussed. Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you. I, uh, I just wanted to quickly apologize for sounding a little curt as I was soliciting my colleague, Commissioner Thornton, to make her motion. I was simply trying to get things rolling, that's all. I think, uh, it's time to, time to wrap this up. But thank you. And sorry, Commissioner Thornton, for my curtness.
Thanks for that, Commissioner. Uh, and Commissioner Thornton, uh, we're gonna go into third round with you.
Um, I appreciate that, Commissioner, um, Edwards. Uh, so, were all of this information, where we got up to the $9 million and the $200,000, is that gonna stay in print somewhere? I mean, I know we can't change the flagpole, but the, the, uh, the, the information we sent out, is that gonna stay in print somewhere?
Uh, and, and I'll turn it over to Manager Williams in just a second. But, uh, as I read the agenda report, um, 9 million was identified as staff as essentially a high-watermark should the, uh, metrics provided by magistrate court for typical number and volume of individual dispossessionaries sort of all be fulfilled through a program. So, Manager Williams, uh, if you could clarify.
Yeah, Mayor, I think you said that well. It was, um, I, I think it, I, I, I know at the, the work session, there were some questions about potential budgets. And so that was just trying to, uh, I spoke briefly with a magistrate court to get a sense of what the volume was and, and what it could be. I think there was some concern that, uh, with eviction moratorium possibly coming to an end, that those levels could rise. So I just chose the pre-pandemic number. It's, 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 it was that simple, just around 3,000 cases and tried to find some middle ground. Um, just talking through it, you know, a landlord's not going to go through the trouble of filing a dispossession for somebody that's behind on their rent for only 30 days. You know, it's, it's probably going to be a few months. And just tried to find an average rent, um, that might, might be indicative, uh, without having to do a lot of data mining. But we would do all those things. So the 9 million is just a straw figure as the, um, agenda item says. And certainly, uh, it, you know, you could fund up to that amount, uh, any, you know, anywhere below, anywhere above. Thank you, Mayor.
I, you know, I think, again, when you put numbers out there like that, you do raise tension in this community. And, um, I'm ready to vote. But, um, yeah, I really do think you raised a bunch of tension in this community unwarrantedly. I'm through.
All right, Mayor, I'd like to respond to that.
Please.
Um, Commissioner Hamby did ask at the last work session that some budget be put together. Um, certainly was not my intent to, I certainly think it was warranted to respond to Commissioner Hamby. Uh, you know, it's, it's imperfect, but we haven't, I, I just don't have the leave of this commission to spend a lot of time on this yet. So it was a straw figure. That's all it was. And I want to apologize to any citizens that I may have upset with that.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna be quick. I know we want to vote. But, and that's, I, I think Manager Williams just, just made my point for me that they didn't have a lot of time to spend on this issue. And I'm, I'm trying not to ask them to spend more time on this issue because I know DCA is doing it. DCA pays the back rent. DCA helps with evictions before they get to court. So that's the whole point of that. I mean, that's, isn't that what we want? To make sure that they're in their home and working with the, uh, the tenants and the landlords and, and coming up with a good solution. So, you know, they, they do, they do, you know, if you do get an eviction, you can work with DCA and, or from there. But I think the whole point of it is to, is to, like Commissioner Link said a couple of weeks ago, let's, let's prevent it before it gets to the court. So, all right, let's, let's go and get this, get this going. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, there's a substitute motion on the floor from Commissioner Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Hamby. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you could go ahead and do roll call for that substitute motion.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Link?
No.
Wright?
Yes.
Denton?
No.
Hool?
No.
Edwards? Myers?
No.
Four yes, six no.
All right, uh, motion fails to carry. Uh, we'll return to the original motion. And, um, uh, I, I think Commissioner Myers, you, uh, did a good job as a scribe. Could you, uh, read for us the, uh, minor amendment that it seems like the motioners agreed to?
Uh, and include potential third party partners, including DCA and Georgia Legal Services and varied funding sources.
And, uh, and, and just to confirm, that, that's, uh, suitable to the motioner, Commissioner Denton, and the second, Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, let's go ahead and, uh, return to this original motion as just amended. Um, if, uh, Madam Clerk, you could begin with Commissioner Denton.
Denton?
Yes.
Hool?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
All right, uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. All right, we're gonna move on to next order of business, uh, which is a resolution authorizing settlement of a claim. If, uh, Attorney Drake, you could just summarize this briefly. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this claim arises out of, uh, Athens Clark County Police Office for Sir Marcus McQueen's alleged careless operation of his Athens Clark County Police Department motor vehicle owner about October 20, 2009, which allegedly called, allegedly caused personal injuries to the plaintiff. Uh, we have been able to work out a settlement agreement with the attorneys for, uh, the claimant and recommend settling this claim for $140,000.
Uh, thank you, Attorney Drake. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, uh, I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Denton. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, hearing none. Uh, motion carries. Resolution is approved. Uh, we next have a resolution to approve and adopt the mall area tax allocation district intergovernmental agreement with the Clark County School District, um, for the public and for this body. The Clark County Board of Education, at their last Thursday meeting, approved this intergovernmental agreement, which is the TAD, on which, uh, they are partnering with us for their increment of the property tax. And this would create a body with three individuals from this group and two individuals from the school board, uh, that would review applications, much like we do for the other TADS as the redevelopment authority alone. So, uh...
Mayor, I have a question. I have a quick, quick question if you don't want.
Absolutely.
So, so you said it would be three from this body. Would it not be, are we not going to do it like we did the, the TAD and have three citizens review?
We, we, we would in addition have that, uh, TAC, that, um, citizen body. Yeah, great question.
Okay, okay, good. I, I'll go ahead and make it. I don't know if Judd needs to read anything, but I'll make a motion, whatever it is he's gonna read.
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, it's just a resolution. And, uh, as you stated, Board of Education's approved this. And the key thing about this document is, uh, it, it will require this committee that's made up of three commissioners and three Board of Education members, uh, to approve any, uh, basically expenditure of funds. That is the difference in the C Committee, Citizen Committee. So it gives the Board of Education some input along with this body, uh, with respect to expending funds for the mall area TAD only.
So, so let me just be clear on that. It, it, it doesn't, so you have three of the commissioners. It doesn't come back to the full body to decide how those funds?
Oh, it absolutely would. It would actually, it would definitely come back to the full body, but it would have to have the approval of this, what we call the redevelopment committee before it could come to the full body.
Oh, I got you. I'm with you now. So we've kind of established a redevelopment committee for this one. Okay, I got you.
Even, and, and for example, if the redevelopment committee, uh, approved something and this commission didn't, it wouldn't go forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I'm making a motion to approve the resolution.
I second it.
All right, I've got a, uh, motion from, uh, Commissioner Hamby. The second was from Commissioner Hool. I know there were a couple out there. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, call on Commissioner Hool, uh, this, uh, the stance, it's in his district.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was excited to second since it's in our, in, in District Six. Uh, I, um, I just wanted to clarify, was the school board vote unanimous?
Not.
It was not?
No, I, I believe there were, uh, two opposed.
Okay, do we have any information on who they were or why?
Uh, I, I know we could look at their minutes, but I do not.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Um, I was going to second. Um, I think that, um, this would be a great addition for that end of town. Um, I think that the school board, I noticed that Commissioner Hool, uh, who, who might have opposed, there is still a lot of, um, there is still a lot of mistrust in local government and us. So we need to do our best to, um, make these some good projects so we can bring on people and make believers out of us. So I definitely am glad we did this and hope we'll do other TADS in the future.
Thanks, Commissioner. Uh, any further input before we move to a vote? All right, uh, motion and second is on floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, hearing none. We're gonna go ahead and move on. Um, item seven is to forward to the Planning Commission for consideration renaming of Carriage Court to Ariel Callaway Avenue, uh, project I know that, uh, has been underway for a while, is in Commissioner Wright's district. Commissioner Wright, would you like to make a motion?
Um, yes, I'd like to make a motion. And just a quick explanation, everybody. I, I regret that the agenda item, just sort of the bio and the method behind this and the motivation, uh, wasn't included in the packet. But we voted on this before, and it was Carriage Lane. And the original, uh, request was for Carriage Court. So we're going back to that original request and, um, being thorough as it is in the planning department. They wanted to make sure we approved it since we already voted for the other street. And we're changing the street. And then it's, we're going to Ariel Callaway Avenue as a given name to be on the sign. Um, and I, this is another good example of us continuing to memorialize and have a method of capturing the person that we're naming things after. So I, I hope that we can continue on that because... So I hope that we can continue on that because there's more to this person than just renaming the street. But that's the stage that we're at, this will go to Planning Department, the Planning Commission, and come back to us. And I make a motion that we unanimously approve it.
Motion from Commissioner Wright, I hear, second?
Second, second, I'm sorry, second.
Motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Thornton. Any further input?
I have another, a quick question. And perhaps I'm misremembering some of my early communications with the petitioners. But knowing folks in this community, do you refer to it as Thumpa Ave? I wondered why the change to the legal name, though I don't have any objections if that's been broadly supported by the public.
Well, when I, Alicia Smith, who spoke, I think at our voting meeting on this before, when I was bringing up the fact that you can't do quotation marks for a nickname on a street sign, and it, that seemed problematic, and it sort of then didn't have the alignment to her name, which, again, having Ariel Callaway's name. So that's where that kind of shifted back to where that would be okay. And she spoke with the family, and the family is supportive of her name. And then we're looking to have a sign that captures a little bit more about her and her nickname because evidently it's already called Thumpa Avenue, and we want to capture that, but not in the green sign that's the actual street. Does that make sense, Commissioner Parker?
Makes sense, yeah, thank you.
Thanks for that, Commissioner Wright. All right, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries, thank you everyone for your work on this. Last item of business under suspension of rules in this special called session is the appointment to the Deferred Compensation Board. I would entertain a motion for that appointment. So moved?
So moved.
Seconded.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hool, second from Commissioner Myers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Dennis Millie is appointed to the Deferred Compensation Board. And we do have another round of board authority and commission applications coming up. So I hope that members of the public will continue to look at that at ACC.gov.com. All right, that is it, I would entertain a motion to adjourn special called session.
Second.
A motion from, I apologize, who made the motion?
Commissioner Wright, I seconded.
Commissioner Wright made the motion, Commissioner Edwards seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, given that it is eight thirty, and we have our agenda setting session next, I'm gonna go ahead and call for a seven-minute break, it's eight thirty-three by my clock, so in seven minutes, we will be back in front of the screen.
Seven, huh, seven.
New beverage in front of you.
On your mark, set, go.
Thanks, all.
All right, we are back on Tuesday, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Now moving on to our agenda setting session of this evening. And the agenda setting session typically features several blocks, the consent agenda, old business and new business, and then any planning and zoning items that are coming forward. And we have all of those for us tonight. We also have begun to have in this last couple of months, audio online input. And we do have one section of audio input tonight. And so that is from Rodney King, who is here on behalf of one of the planning and zoning actions. Rodney, I have you unmuted now. You should be able to speak to us if you're there.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Mayor Commissioners, thank you for taking the time to hear from me tonight. We presented our project about two weeks ago to the planning commission and it was denied. We plan to have a full presentation for this body on January, June first, I'm sorry, in a couple of weeks. Overall, the planning commissioners conceded that our project had the appropriate location for student housing. They liked the overall design. And they thought, and they agreed that the location was not ideal for retail, but they still denied the project. Some of the commissioner, planning commissioners wanted a family housing affordable component within the development, which we feel is not necessarily a reasonable ask given the location. We have set aside about fifteen percent of our base for affordable student housing. We're working on cost comparisons to present to you guys in the June first meeting to show that our potential development is significantly discounted to other downtown properties. Although we recognize that this project cannot solve the entire affordable housing issue in Athens, but this project is trying to turn the tide and not get an additional burden. And I had a few more prepared remarks, but there is an intersection of kind of the growth of UGA and the affordable housing crisis that is in Athens. The explosive growth of the university has caused, you know, rental rates to rise above market rental rates. The project that we are developing is being developed on vacant land and it's not displacing any housing stock. We're working on a kind of qualification mechanisms to make sure that we ensure that we hit needy students for the affordable housing program. But most importantly, one of the primary reasons that there's a lack of affordable housing is that the student population is absorbing housing, absorbing homes in neighborhoods that are not necessarily near the campus. Our project, albeit small, gets those students out of those neighborhoods, which those homes can be returned to the traditional multifamily market, who can obviously, you know, rent at cheaper rates. As you guys know, most students in Athens have, they have an enormous amount of disposable income, which is driving rental rates. So all, it may be counterintuitive, but supply is one of the natural ways to bring down rental rates, especially when you're dealing with students and student populations. We hope to show you guys some case studies here in a couple of weeks on our June first presentation. With it, thank you, and you'll obviously see a full presentation from me and my group in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Rodney. All right, that is the only public input tonight we have on an agenda item. We do have a presentation later, but it's.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a point? I don't think that he mentioned that that was item number nineteen. Everybody, that's for one fifty five Mitchell Street that that gentleman was just speaking about.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. I appreciate that.
But nineteen is a long way away. I wanted to go ahead and align it while the information was fresh. And then, Mr. Mayor, can you call, can you, can you, Mr. King, he will be able to present to us? Or do I need to straighten that out?
So you may remember that pre pandemic, we began having general public input regarding planning and zoning items at our agenda setting meetings in addition to the state required public input opportunity at the voting meetings. And so if the applicant or his partners would seek the full ten minute opportunity and opportunity in the city hall chamber, that would be available at the June first voting meeting.
And they would actually be able to give visuals or should I clear that up in email?
They, they would be able to speak at the microphone.
But not visually present?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's right. All right, so moving on, we've got seven items that are on the consent agenda that has been reviewed by Mayor Protim, auditor, manager, the attorney, the clerk, and myself. Would any commissioner like to remove a consent agenda item for discussion? All right, hearing none, we will move on to old business and those consent agenda items will be considered at a single vote on our June first meeting. First item of old business is the Falling Shoals Drive parking prohibition. This has been placed on hold, given some engagement between Commissioner Davenport and the neighborhood. Commissioner Davenport, any, any update?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. So we will be, the Falling Shoals Community Neighborhood Association, excuse me, HOA, will be having a meeting next Wednesday, the twenty sixth at six P M. So you're doing Falling Shoals and you are concerned about yellow striping, please come out six P M. Next, next Wednesday. And I would like to move this to consent.
Right, everybody okay moving this to consent? All right, any further input? All right, so Madam Clerk, number eight, we will move to consent. And then moving on to nine, another item of old business. This is the Old Jefferson Road sanitary sewage pump station concept, which was put on hold, particularly for some investigation regarding solar opportunities. Any input on this item tonight?
I'd like to ask Manager Williams for an update on this, on the information he was going to gather.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Myers. So staff had worked with the engineer after hearing indications of desire from the commission to have solar incorporated as a power source with the pump that's associated with the pump station. And, and that was, those figures were, you know, roughly thirty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars, and a hundred thousand dollars. A hundred thousand dollars being an array with a battery backup. You know, with the solar being used as for a primary source, you know, and, you know, intermittent use throughout the day and the evening. You would, you would use a solar and a battery, which is more expensive. And then you could use grid power as a backup. But that's, that's currently our public utility staff recommendation. I believe the developer had asked, and I'm not speaking for the developer, but my, my memory is that they had asked for some consideration if, if you were to ask them to do that, to include that hundred thousand dollars, you know, within the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deposit that's being asked here. But the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on, you know, that twenty year figure that staff came up with, with maintaining the pump facility as it was originally proposed. So that's, that's sort of where we are with, you know, my understanding of the project.
Wasn't that two hundred and fifty thousand, didn't that, some of the estimates in the included money for the, the power costs for that?
Yes, that, that was power costs associated with the, you know, if it was grid power that was used, yeah.
So do you know what the power costs were in that, of that two hundred and fifty thousand? Or perhaps we could follow up?
Is that something we could follow up with from staff?
The power, the estimated power cost was at twenty years and three percent inflation was thirty four thousand five hundred.
So cover everything. Okay, Commissioner Denson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I did hear from the developer last week, I reached out to me about this. And my understanding is that they were, they are working on an alternative proposal that they said that, that will include at least some of this and bring that forward. Don't have any details on that, but that was, that was my understanding from that conversation. As soon as I get that, I'll definitely pass it on to the entire commission to look at.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any further input on this, Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I'd like to see some math regarding the estimated power cost for the savings in power for the life of the apparatus, if it were to be fully outfitted with solar, before it's transferred to ACC, as well as that twenty years after. If somebody could do some of that math and present it to us so we could come up with, you know, a fair adjustment to that deposit.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right. All right, everyone, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item then. This is item ten, the calendar year two thousand and twenty one pavement maintenance program. I believe the clerk just in the last day or so sent out some additional information, including a roadway list. I have not had opportunity to take a look at that, but are there any questions of staff around this? All right, we'll go ahead and leave this on old business. Oftentimes, as you have an opportunity to look at that, you may have some neighborhood specific questions you, you may want to ask between now and the voting meeting.
Sorry, was this the pavement thing you were asking about?
Yes.
Okay, if I could just ask Manager Williams one quick question about the budget here. So, so, and I won't take much time because I know we got to go on here. But the budget, again, I'm going back to my question. If we've got, if we've got twenty six million dollars of funds available and we're only anticipating sixty eight hundred, or six point eight million approximately dollars being utilized out of that, why, why aren't we not, you know, why aren't we, why aren't we adding more streets? And trying to, trying to pick up the pace here a bit? I mean, even if, even if it requires having somebody else, you know, having two different, having two different companies or three different companies doing the projects.
Sure. Well, part of it, part of it, you know, the, the money involves several different sources, including L-Meg, which is an annual.
Right.
And so we're leveraging some of that. And, and to that point, Commissioner Hamby, you're right, we're trying to spread it over the life of the T-Sploß and, you know, address the most, the pavement that needs the most work. But you could, you could accelerate it, for instance. Now, we would always recommend that you do all preventative maintenance in any given year. That just helps extend the life. But you could, you could hold and aggregate, you know, funding for one year, you could isolate one side of the county and do that one year, one side of the other. You, you could do it any number of ways, Commissioner Hamby.
Right. Well, I guess I don't, I don't want to be the one to figure that out. That's, that's why you get the big bucks. I, I guess I'm, and I don't know if the other commissioners, I guess you see where I'm going. So maybe it's just a discussion that we can keep having. One more question I had is, there looked like there was a, this item number, facts and issues number, this is how I just had it here. Again, this where I was under history. Where they, where they turned in their first bid for eleven million dollars and you reference a list, oh, provided and, and and then you gave them a revised list. So is, is the list we're looking at a revised list? Or is that the main list that they gave the eleven million dollar quote on? It's number fifteen I'm looking at. There are facts and issues. And then you jump to sixteen and it references a revised resurfacing program. So I'm wondering what list we're looking at? Are we looking at the one? You see my question?
Attachment one is the updated list, is that correct?
Yeah, but I'm wondering in fifteen, what was the original rest?
We. It is a revised list, Commissioner Hamby. I'd have to confirm on the list that you're looking at.
Yeah, you see where I'm saying that though. On number fifteen, it talks about a list totaling eleven million. And then you gave them a revised list, which brought the bid down to six point eight million. So I, I'm wondering what the eleven million is and why we, why we aren't doing the eleven million.
Well, the eleven, the eleven million was the original list and it came back, you know, twice as much basically than we thought it would be. So staff went back and you can see in attachment one where up in the upper right hand corner, it says revised five thirteen twenty one. And so list that you're looking at, basically what happened, because the costs were so high, staff took it back and, and took some of the road segments out to try and get it closer to where, you know, we thought we'd be, you know, six million dollars or so. And so that's.
I guess, yeah, you answered my question, Mayor. I guess I was wondering, you know, can we see what those streets are that you took out?
Sure.
And it goes, it goes back to the, maybe you just sent us that and it goes back to the question of trying to get some of the more, more streets done. I mean, if we've got eleven million, why don't we utilize, why don't we get all the streets done for that eleven million? So anyway, I hope I'm making sense. I may not be.
I think, I think that the, the original list is in the attachment as well.
Is it? Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, I think that there's a lot of, there's a lot of attachments here.
I can find it later if I have any questions about it, but I think you see what I'm asking about.
Thanks for following up, Commissioner and Manager Williams. I appreciate it. And we can make sure we can compare the two lists later on. I, I know we're in an unusually high labor cost market regarding these construction activities right now. Certainly hope for the.
Yes, Mayor, yeah, if I might. So the rehabilitation. So Commissioner Hamby's right, we can provide him a list of the original. What's in your agenda item right now is the revised resurfacing list. The preventative maintenance list has not changed from the original, has not changed from the original submission, because we would, we would always do the preventative maintenance. You know, no matter what, we would recommend that. You know, if you said, well, no resurfacing this year, we'd still recommend preventative maintenance. So we'll get you that information, Commissioner Hamby. Thank you.
Thank you both. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I was just, you know, digging through, looking at streets in my district and trying to figure out where, you know, where the improved pavement segments fall. I have some question about Hills Chapel. It cites a Brooklyn Avenue as, as, you know, one of the roads that it will be paved between. And there really is no Brooklyn Avenue in that vicinity unless it's an unmarked street. And the Brooklyn Avenue that I'm thinking of is over off of Oval Fort, it's in Hawthorne. So I, I'd just like a little clarity on what precisely this segment is for Hills Chapel.
Yeah, thanks, Manager and Commissioner for following up on that item. All right, any further questions about this item? All right, we'll follow up on a couple of these details. All right, under new business, the item eleven is T-Sploß twenty eighteen, project eleven and project twelve, which involves both the bike and pedestrian buckets, as we sometimes call them. And an area I'm very interested in, the Barber Street bike and pedestrian improvements, primarily between Boulevard and Dairy Pack Road. We have that multi-leg intersection. Got a couple of comments about this, but I'm interested in hearing from commissioners first. So Commissioner Link?
Yeah, a lot of this is in my district and I'm, you know, I know there's been some public input on it. I'm interested, and I haven't had a chance to totally dig through the, the agenda item, but I'm interested in looking at the public input in depth. And I'm curious, I mean, I know this will be approving a project concept. But moving forward, would there be the opportunity to have this moved forward in phases? I am concerned about the funding depletion of the bike and pedestrian T-Sploß bucket that some of this would come from. I'm, I'm curious to, I'd like staff to give me a number as to, you know, if this project were to move forward all at once, what's left in those bike and pedestrian T-Sploß buckets? And, 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 you know, what other projects are on that prioritized list that may not get done anytime in the foreseeable future if we were to move forward with this all at once?
Commissioner Link, if you look at the conclusion, the very end, the first paragraph addresses what you're asking.
Okay, thank you, because I've not had time to read this whole thing.
Basically, basically, cost savings based upon construction efficiencies could be nullified through a phased approach.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Edwards, for pointing that out. I'll take it, I'll take the time to read through this thoroughly. I'll let the management know if I have any further questions.
Other input, Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I, I just want to thank Athens in Motion for the work that they did responding to our questions. I haven't had the time to read everything in great detail here, but I know they had some special sessions to, special call sessions to discuss this. They do give us a prioritization for funding, which is, I think is something that we asked for in terms of the order of the projects. If there was a limited amount of money going from segment four to segment three, two, and one. And there are just some other really neat and detailed things that I think both Athens in Motion and Transportation and Public Works worked on. And I look forward to looking at this more closely. But I just want to clarify again from Manager Williams, when a T-Sploß funding, this, this cycle of T-Sploß will be over? And at what point we will be starting to work on new T-Sploß, a new T-Sploß program?
Yes, and in fact, I was going to send you all a correspondence tomorrow regarding that. We will, our initial thought was that the election for the T-Sploß, let's call it twenty twenty three is when, you know, we thought it would take effect, would be in November of next year. So, you know, roughly, you know, fifteen, sixteen months from now or, or seventeen months. But collections are ahead right now. And so it could be, we are projecting now that the T-Sploß may actually need to be voted on in May of twenty two, which is only a year away. And so I was going to come to you with some suggestions about going ahead and moving forward. You know, nothing prevents you from, if, if you wanted to give the voters the opportunity to vote and there not be a break in collections, which can sometimes cause confusion for the retailers, that we would go ahead and, and bring this process to you for your consideration and approval. Perhaps go ahead and put the T-Sploß Citizens Advisory Committee together and start soliciting projects as soon as the summer, you know, in the near, very near future. So that's what we're looking at and I will send some more information tomorrow on that.
So to clarify, Manager Williams, when will the, when will we have paid, I don't know, our T-Sploß money for this round? Is that by, when are we have, when will the collection be final approximately?
I need to look at those calculations, but next year. So I'm, I'm hearing two things in the question, Commissioner Myers, when will the collections lapse? And that will be next year. When will the final T-Sploß funds from twenty seventeen be, or twenty eighteen be spent? And, you know, there might be a project or two that takes a little bit longer beyond the collections to finish. For instance, we're still doing some Sploß twenty eleven projects right now.
I, I actually meant, when would we then, if it all moved on smoothly, when would we start collecting new funds for new Sploß? When would they be coming in? In like next, next summer?
Yeah, we believe in FY twenty two. I, I'll have to go look at what quarter we're thinking. I think we're thinking we'll finish maybe in September, October next year. So thereabouts.
Okay, just to clarify that we'd have more funds starting in about a year or so.
That's right. And yes, Commissioner Edwards?
I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
No, I just, just was wanting to note, and, and I think Manager Williams highlighted this, that when there's discontinuity in connect, in collections, it, it keeps some of our ongoing programming from happening and, and also can create challenges for the retail environment. So the goal is to make sure that we have the referendum well ahead of the end of collections.
Good point. I had a, I, I just wanted to highlight a concern with my colleagues about these recommended concepts. You know, I, I'm really concerned about creating robust two-way bike lanes with a sidewalk next to them between Boulevard and Newton Bridge. But then having just a shareo from Boulevard to Prince. You know, I, I, I look at this, these projects that come to us as trying to design a network. And in my mind, a network radiates from the urban core outwards. And I just feel like we're creating a, just a, a lost opportunity there. So I, I really would like to see a multi-use path that creates a continuity from Prince Avenue out. It troubles me to see that shareo there. I just, you know, shareos to me are, are pretty useless. I mean, seeing a shareo right next to a two-way bike lane. Yeah, I'd much rather to see a multi-use path the whole distance. I don't think anybody's comfortable sending their children onto a shareoed lane. I mean, it provides no protection. So I, I, I'll be talking to my colleagues more about that. I'd like to see more protection on that key part from Prince to Boulevard. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. And before I turn it back to Commissioner Link, that somewhat dovetails with the comments I wanted to make about this project, some of which I raised in the work session we had about this. And that is, you know, we have developed a standard for multi-use paths on Firefly, on the Greenway Network. You know, this takes an approach that some high bike use communities use, which is a cycle track parallel to a separate sidewalk. I question whether this is the right initial implementation of a, a cycle track to a bike lane for a couple of reasons. And I'll share that, had an opportunity to meet with a professor from the College of Environment and Design, who many of us have worked with, who works on bike and pedestrian facilities around the country. And just on the actual street itself, we noted a couple of features. One is that. One is that there's a lot of what I'm going to call visual obstruction. Lots of utility poles, lots of homes very close to the, the way, and including some industrial facilities like the Pilgrim's Pride poultry plant. So that's a, that's a challenging component. And he noted that ideally what you would have in an initial rollout of a cycle track in a community is a very broad visual swath in which you, you didn't really have obstructions close to the cycle track as you, by necessity would here. The second element is, is just one of our topography. This Barber Street is not on a ridgeline, it's not on a plateau. So particularly on the uphill side, which would be the side closer to motor vehicle traffic, you, you have this very challenging hill, really almost for the entire length of the project. So what, what I would like to suggest, we look toward as an opportunity, is a multi-use path, again, keeping in with our standard model, given the topography, given the visual obstruction, and also given my desire to move that multi-use path away from the vehicular roadway. And so I, I really prefer if we're going to use essentially the same real estate, I'd like to have a planted buffer between the vehicular motorway and curb and the, the multi-use path altogether. So just want to make those points. Obviously, we're still in the concept stage, but, but I want to get those out into the public realm before we move any closer to spending money on this. So I'm going to move to Commissioner Hool, who we haven't heard from yet, and then Commissioner Link.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to just request a printout of this if I could. Trying to zoom in on some of those things, it's really hard to see when it's like wide enough. So just, printouts would be very helpful. And while we're at it, the paving list would also be helpful to have a printed version of. But the comment I wanted to make is, I'd like to see us incorporate strategies and methods used by participatory budgeting in our next approach to T-Spots. So especially with how we conduct outreach as well as getting input. There's legal limits, of course, on what we can do with our Citizens Advisory Committee because of, you know, citizenship status, voter status being required for the formal membership on there. But I'd like to see us work with organizations who are leading on participatory budgeting in our community, like People's Budget Athens, and/or working with some of the organizations like the Participatory Budgeting Project nationally, who can maybe advise us on ways that we can build equity better into our process. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'll go and turn it back to Commissioner Link. Commissioner Link, I think you're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, I'd like to speak to some of the challenges, particularly on that, that final leg as, as Barber approaches Prince. You know, that's a historic neighborhood, you know, houses built before cars were really a thing. Narrow roadway, and like the mayor stated, some real topographical challenges. In order to widen the right-of-way, to incorporate a, a multi-use path in that area, would, that would require a feat of engineering and humongous retaining walls, basically taking away the front yards of, of many of the houses on the eastern side of the street. And as someone who, I'm kind of a wuss in riding a bike or a scooter these days. I don't take chances, I don't ride on traffic streets. I will ride on the sidewalk when I feel more comfortable. I'll say that that stretch of Barber, I, I do ride on it. Even, I, I believe that it's, that the traffic should be calmed on it. I think that we could achieve a lot of those safety measures with traffic calming, with speed bumps and lowering that speed limit. I, I don't think that the speed limit should be 30 miles per hour by any means, but I would, I would put money on, you know, the, the 85th percentile speed limit probably being less than that because there's so much parking on that, that street. So it's really, really uncomfortable to approach 30 miles an hour on that street. You know, I think that with proper traffic calming and proper, proper markings, you know, and, and other measures, you know, it, it could be made more acceptable for bike traffic. And I also want to remind folks that it's perfectly legal in the state of Georgia for children to ride bikes on the sidewalk. I don't know that it's all that safe, considering that there are driveways crossing the sidewalk there. I'm not sure what measures are recommended for driveways that conflict with mixed-use paths or, or, you know, sidewalk-type paths that, that cyclists might be on. So we might want to just take a good look at that short stretch of street and come up with alternatives that would accommodate the existing built environment and the optimum safety measures for cyclists.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, we will definitely be following up on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go right ahead, Commissioner.
Just real quick, I'd like to say just the, to Commissioner Link's point, there is a sidewalk existent on the eastern side where those houses are already. So I'm talking about, you know, multi-use path. You know, we gain just a few feet. You know, there's already a sidewalk there, we just get a few more feet, we have a multi-use path. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. And for the most part, I, I strongly agree with the comments that you made about the multi-use trail. And, and I understand, I've read through the Athens in Motion plan and their recommendations for when to use protected, you know, bike, bike lanes and, and the different things. And it seemed that there is a lot of crossover that usually multi-use paths can be used instead there. Although I know when there's higher volume for bicycles, they like to have the, the separated bike facilities. But I, for one thing, definitely that we have created this, for consistency's sake, we are creating a lot of multi-use paths all across our community. And I think that it could be cause some confusion. And I'm most, and I understand the whole idea that if we had a multi-use path, there is more, maybe a possibility increase on collisions between pedestrians and cyclists or something. But I'm really concerned about on this plan, in between Waterworks Drive and Row Road, where the sidewalk crosses over to the other side and goes down and it crosses back again. I'm just imagining how people will probably realistically use this. And I think that there might be a lot of people who are walking on the sidewalk, which is right next to the bike facility. Instead of crossing the road, they start walking in the bike facility or that block. Again, because of like, I don't know, because this thing, like, that people are used to sharing a pedestrian space with bicycles all across the rest of our community. So I, I'm very concerned about, especially with having this, which will hopefully run into our Greenway soon, down after it was past Dairy Pack Road. While I understand the arguments for the protected bike lanes, I'm, I'm just worried about the consistency in our approach when we talks about multi-use. And I, and also the thing that we haven't talked about yet though is they did bring up a, an estimate for the cost if we were to do multi-use trail the entire way. And I believe it says $875,000. So I get that, that is a big number on top of what we're already talking about here. But I don't know, I think it's something we should at least consider for, again, consistency's sake with our kind of multi-use facilities.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, we are going to move on to number 12, Spots 2020 project concept for the Classic Center Arena. Input on this item.
Consent.
Commissioner Hool?
I'm, I'm fine with the move into consent, but I did just want to follow up there. A couple of lingering questions from our work session. One was it, one was regarding whether this will be built in accordance with our sustainable building policy that we passed on April 6th? And then the other was the contracting standards. Getting some clarification on why the contractor that was chosen for construction, once it's being built, stood out regarding labor standards and minority employment. So just to like to get that information.
Duh, we could definitely request that from the Classic Center authority.
And I think it was the Office of Sustainability, or Andrew Saunders maybe, that would have to weigh in on the differences between the IGA we have with the Classic Center and our more recently updated sustainable building policy. If there's any gaps there, just to understand what those are.
Thanks for that.
Thanks.
With, with response to that, is everybody fine moving this to consent?
I, I think it should stay on, on the regular agenda. This is a, a big, I, we still.
I agree.
Yeah, we need some answers to those questions.
All right, we'll leave this on new business. Any further queries? All right, we will move on to item 13. It's the nonprofit capacity building program and budgetary allocation to advantage behavioral health systems. So Commissioner Hamby?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I have a, it's a question, a question in the comment. I guess my question is, for Manager Williams, it seemed like two different subjects. You know, the reimbursement of the advantage behavioral and then a new program. So why is it, I, I guess I'm wondering why it's on the same agenda item?
Yeah, I was surprised as well.
It's coming from the same source of funding. It's, it's the mental health, you know, it's before the end of the year, the budget year, it's using those funds from that pot that was left over, that was assigned at the beginning of last fiscal year. So we just, we just put it all in the same agenda item so that we could allocate those funds before year-end.
Okay, well, I guess it just seems, it just seems odd that they're on, on the same, same, same sort of agenda item. I hadn't, I hadn't seen that before. But my question also is, you know, in light of us, in light of us having a discussion earlier about a, a new program, now we have another new program. We've also got our budget discussion coming up. Is it, would it not be prudent for us to sort of hold off on, on making a decision about the non-capacity building until we at least have our budget discussions? At least have our discussions about the Athens Recovery Plan? Because some of that money might be used for this, from my standpoint. This money could either stay within the priority package or, or help us with that very long list of, of, of things people wanted for the, for the general fund that we discussed about last week. So just kind of my two cents work. I, I mean, am I right in saying that of others? I mean, I'm curious, it just seems like, I'd, I'd like to get some answers on the project reset, about the cost of that and the cost of some of the other things that we talked about during the budget before we move on to a new programming that's going to require extra, extra staff work to help develop this. Thank you. I don't mind, I don't mind approving the advantage stuff, but the other stuff might weigh.
Yeah, I was going to ask if perhaps we could split this into two items. I too was a little confused by why these were both on the same thing. And it sounds like from Commissioner Hamby's comments, there may be some folks in support of one, but not us or the other. And so that would make sense to me. I wonder if there's appetite for that among my fellow commissioners, but.
Well, we'd be willing to break those into separate agenda items if that would, if that, if that would make it easier.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry to butt in, but while I'm, while I already had the floor, I was wondering if we had addressed how much of the funding for the nonprofit capacity building project is going towards trainers and how much is going to the nonprofits themselves?
I recall it being about 10% going to the support. Is that accurate, Manager Williams?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Cool, thank you.
And 90% of the nonprofits. Did I say, Commissioner Edwards?
If I might, Mayor, too, just before we get away from some of Commissioner Hamby's comments. So absolutely, you could hold off on this. This was just, you know, a couple of things here, I think from a timing perspective. One was, you know, this has been a consistent theme that we've heard from the Commissioners about, you know, trying to find, you know, how do you break into learning how to, you know, accept the funds and spend them and, and reporting and compliance and governance and all those things. And, and so it was allocating some funds that were left over and could be used for those purposes, number one. Number two, with the Rescue Act funds in the offing, and of course, there's a lot more discussion to be had there. You know, they could begin at least, you know, I think up to 10 is what was contemplated. Nonprofits could, you know, receive some of these fundings, receive some technical assistance, and perhaps, you know, have some experience under their belt for some future round of funding, if that's where you go. But certainly, you can hold off on this if you would like. The advantage, though, we would ask that you go ahead and, and approve.
Yeah, that, and I don't, I don't want to give an impression I disagree with their intent. I don't at all disagree with their intent. I'm just, I'm just, I'm concerned about the timing and some of the other priorities that, that we have on the table at, at this point in time. And, and also maybe answer some more questions about, about some of the training. And, you know, I know some other organizations here and down also do some nonprofit training. So I'd be, I'd be curious to learn more about that as to, as to how they could help us build capacity as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Commissioner Edwards, Thornton, and Link.
I, I too would be fine, would be fine holding this item just until I, I learn a little bit more about what, what we're talking about here. I'm just a little unclear, we're, we're going to have 10% for trainers, but we're going to give nonprofits 90% of the funding? I, I'm just, is it a training program or is it just a appropriation? And, you know, I do have a little bit of sticker shock on the number there. So yeah, I'd be fine holding it. Thanks.
Thanks. Commissioner Thornton?
I think, I, I'm definitely sticker shocked. And I, I did hear, and I do agree with Manager Blaine, we have been talking, how do we help our, our, our smaller nonprofits? I think that we have enough resources, and I, I think I sent it out in the email, that would, if, if we're serious about helping nonprofits, that we would not have that big of a price tag on this. I didn't get the part, and I don't understand how nonprofits get, what, 90%? I mean, do we cross the, is there a change with the gratuitous clause? So personally, I, I know, I, I agree with, with Manager Blaine when he said we were talking about this, but I did not expect this big of a price tag with very, very few details. And we are still dealing with emergency stuff. And you heard it tonight with the, well, I, I don't even know if it's a rise of gangs. It might be going on. So I don't know if it's the best use of money, still trying to get through COVID. It might be a good idea, but I got too many questions and I would like to pull it off.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Well, if I, if I could, Mayor, respond to that real quick. So there, there, there would be no conflict with the gratuitous clause. The, the funds would be allocated for indigent services provision consistent with what's been done during the entire pandemic. It would just be targeted towards some nonprofits who had not received some of those funding. So it'd be used for pandemic-type purposes. And, and the allocation is, is for their uses programming, just like all the nonprofits have done to date. They would just be learning real live time, you know, helping the community, but also receiving assistance alongside. But again, certainly we can hold it. I'm, I'm not arguing for that. I just want to clarify that, you know, it, it was meant for, to, for live practice, if you will. That mean they can help and learn at the same time.
We could talk about it later, Manager.
That's helpful, Blaine. Thanks, Commissioner. I've got Commissioners Link, Myers, Hool, and then circle back to Parker and Commissioner Wright as well.
Yeah, I, I'd like to echo my colleagues. I'd like to see, you know, somewhat detailed outline of the capacity building program. Just so we have an idea of, you know, kind of precisely these funds are going to be allocated and how much is putting, being put into administration. You know, what the parameters of the program might be. So we have a, a more detailed idea of what we're investing in and, and how it's going to pan out.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Myers?
I too would rather put this on hold, especially, you know, considering what we're hearing from the community and the incorporation of the training funds and the training requirement in here. I, I need to understand that more. There's a lot of non-training, nonprofit training that already goes on in the community. And I, I just feel a little uneasy. I think right now I really want to hear from the, the non- think right now I really want to hear from the, the, from people themselves and the community themselves about how we're going to spend their money. I just know there's an awful lot of people doing really good things that need our support. I, I did have some people speak with me who were, you know, to be, to be blunt, somewhat offended at the fact that they needed to go through this series of classes to get the money when other organizations hadn't. So perhaps I could also have some information on what we saw through that practice, you know, the RFP that we went through and what were really the problems? Or the, I mean, I know there are people didn't complete the forms correctly, but the kind of, the kind of issues that were on those applications that would make it so that they need this training from us rather than getting it in the community with some of these other programs that are available.
Commissioner Hool?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to echo that I think splitting these agenda items up makes sense. And I'm guessing that everybody's kind of questions here about wanting to put this on hold are just about the nonprofit capacity building program, not the advantage portion. Is that correct? I know I heard that from Commissioner Hamby, but seen some nods. And I guess I just reiterate a couple of queries I had in our work session. I'd love information from HCD on those follow-ups they did with the applicants who didn't get funding. So we can know, you know, how, specifically how many were followed up with and, and who hasn't connected yet. So, you know, ideally hopefully we can help, you know, facilitate those connections as necessary, but also to understand how that went, to figure out, you know, what need this is meeting that might go beyond that. Another concern I, I do have about the program in general, if it's attached to funding at the same time, is then it doesn't help the orgs that might actually most need help, which are the ones that struggle to get approved for funding. So if we're trying to help, you know, very new organizations who, who have a difficult time getting funding in the first place, that might be kind of a separate need than organizations who are already getting funding, but we're trying to help them find ways to get even more funding. And then certainly, from what we heard from folks in the audience tonight, and I've heard similar things from, from different nonprofits, some people really want a program like this and some people really, really don't and are offended by it. So I think taking some time to figure out how to navigate that effectively is going to be important. The last thing I'll say is, whenever we have programs like this where the outcomes aren't easily measurable numbers, I would like to see an evaluation component built into the explanation of the program overall, at least on a basic level, just who's going to be doing that and what on a base level they'll be looking for. So we're kind of defining on the front end how we're going to measure success or lack thereof on the other end, as well as who's going to do that. And to some degree, I think working with external support for the who might be especially helpful. So, thanks.
I agree.
All right, I've got Commissioners Wright I haven't heard from, and then Commissioners Parker and Thornton.
Thanks. If, if we go to the packet, page 185 on this item, it talks about the options. It's options A, B, C, D, E. It seems to me like if the next coming forward for the June vote, if we just do option A, and then put whatever in the agenda item is relevant to B, C, D, E for further consideration. From what I'm hearing, that would be the best way to split this up.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Parker and then Thornton.
Thank you. With regards to the questions folks have brought up about sticker shock, we're sort of aligning with that issue. In my discussions with community members about this project, there has been, there have been a number of folks who have supported. But one concern that has arose, risen is the contracting with UGA for the training. I think this kind of arises out of, you know, a, a really strong movement we have seen in the city over the last couple of years, and a reality acknowledged by many who live here, who may not be involved in that movement work, that the University of Georgia does owe a great debt to this community, given its historical exploitation of slave labor, the low wages that people contend with still, exemption for property tax, et cetera. And I know that these departments are not necessarily perpetrators of the particular issues, but as an institution as a whole, I wondered if anyone had reached out considering the potential for those services to be donated to the program as a part of that larger framework of thinking about how UGA can be a better neighbor to, to folks that, you know, may have been previously harmed by their actions. And so I would also support, for that reason, putting the nonprofit program on, or the nonprofit capacity building pilot on hold to give time for those discussions. And perhaps I would address the issue folks are concerned with, with, you know, 10% of the, the fun, you know, funding going towards training when, you know, that might give more money for the nonprofits, or that might just bring down the overall cost of the program so that it doesn't seem so over the top. And then my other question was just thinking about how nonprofits would be selected. I wondered if there's any consideration given to balancing folks who need the support with the reality that in their community work, they may serve overlapping constituencies. And so, you know, or a duplication of efforts among organizations that all need support, but is, but, you know, whether or not we had given thought to what the community's needs are and also processing some of those applications. And so I think with, with that, with those two considerations, as well as a lot of what my other commissioners have said, I would support putting that item, or that half of the agenda item on hold. But I do think it's important to move ahead with the advantage funding now. And so whether it be through how Commissioner Wright described, or I would preferably like to just send the, the half related to the non, the nonprofit, nonprofit capacity building pilot sort of back to the, to the, not to the drawing board, but, you know, to address a lot of these questions that folks are having, you know, continue to shape the clay, as it were, and move forward with that half as a standalone agenda item, the, the advantage behavioral half.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Thornton?
This is just a statement to Manager Williams. Manager Williams, are you familiar with the nonprofit center in Atlanta?
No, ma'am.
I would just suggest that you, you go to their website and maybe even introduce yourself to, I think, the director, I think her name is Karen Beaver. They could probably do everything at a much nominal cost. It would be in stages and, and things like, but that's a resource that specializes in training nonprofits. And I, I think their membership is just, I think is just minimal. But of course, the workshops may cost more. But if we are going to try to help nonprofits, we definitely need to look at everything that's out there. And that would be one resource.
Thanks, Commissioner. We'll, we'll go ahead and divide this item and continue with the advantage component at our June meeting, and then look to something of a reorientation with the other piece. If you look in the organization selection criteria, you notice that if we're using general funds, there's a limitation on the service area, given the necessity to use local dollars for indigent support for our charter and the, and the Georgia State Constitution. So potentially, if we're using ARP funds, there, there could be some wider eligibility, which may be valuable. I will say that I think conceptually, trying to support undersupervised nonprofits is, is a great goal. And so I, I certainly look forward to the, the next iteration of this coming forward. And of course, if Commissioners have seen this and the public haven't already, the goal is to choose smaller organizations and organizations that have not received funding in the past through other Athens-Clark County administered programs. So we really are sort of lifting up new folks. And so I'm excited about that next step in this. But we will return to this. I'm going to move on to item fourteen. This is our U.S. Department of Transportation Raise Grant application, which we talked about in our work session. And this would extend from the bridge over the North Coney River on North Avenue, up across the loop to Danielsville Road and really provide safe access to lots of members of the public who don't have safe access to amenities right now. Be interested in potentially moving this to consent, if everybody feels good about that.
We'll take consent.
All right. Any further input on this item? All right, Gene, we're going to move fourteen to consent. All right, fifteen is the SLOSS 2020 Program Master, Master Implementation Schedule, which we also discussed at the work session. And as mentioned then, this is something of a refinement of the earlier tiering program that we went through as a body. So any input on this item? Commissioner Hool?
Thank you, Mayor. Just got one more question to reiterate from the work session, which was about that mental health recovery facility project and the inclusion of the site selection, which was kind of puzzling to me. And so just an explanation for if and why that needs to remain there would be helpful. Thank you.
And thanks. I, I had a version of that conversation, or, or maybe that lot of questioning with the manager a few weeks ago, so we can follow up on that. All right. Any other questions about that item? Commissioner, we, we can certainly get response to that. Would everybody feel comfortable moving this to consent, knowing that we're going to get some information on that detail?
We'll take consent.
Consent.
All right. Gene, fifteen, also consent. We are winning. All right, item sixteen for members of the public, as I mentioned earlier, we of course will adopt our FY22 budget at the Tuesday, June 1st voting meeting. And then so this is here as a placeholder, and we'll continue our specific budget discussion Thursday night, two, two days from today. Seventeen, unique item. This is the first time one of these is coming to us. As noted in our earlier approval of the Tax Allocation District Program, an element of everything that happens with prospective tax allocation district funds involves a community benefits agreement. And so this is, this is an opportunity to understand the prospective tax allocation district program and following our, following our planning and zoning items that Brad Griffin is going to present in a moment. We're going to have a mini work session on this, since it's the first one of these we would have seen. Certainly, it could have been a prospect for last week's work session, although you might remember that was a lengthy evening already. So I decided we would not go past the midnight hour, and we just do this item tonight when it's already on the agenda. All right. And I'm going to go ahead and call up Planning Director Brad Griffin, who is going to talk about those items, beginning with item eighteen.
All right, Mayor, I think you need to give me rights to share, please, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I would be glad to do that. All right. All right, it should be in the process of making you a presenter. It might take a couple of seconds.
Just doing something. All right.
All right, we've got it.
Got it?
Yep.
Awesome. Okay. We've got six of them for you this evening. So we will jump right in, if I can get this to open. Here we go. First item tonight is a plan development request along the Old Alberton Road, just west of Winterville. This is a master PD. The request is rezoned from agricultural residential to an RSA plan development. It also includes a future land use map requested amendment from rural to a traditional neighborhood designation. The request is for, it's about a 233-acre portion of a larger tract that is proposed to be subdivided out. Overall, total build out right at around 800 total units with about 90 acres of open space and a multi, a mix of different housing types from single family to duplexes to some multifamily and just a little, little piece of commercial along with it. There are 10 waivers associated with this plan development, and they're all listed in detail with more explanation in the reports. I won't go through all of these as part of this presentation, as you have all that information in front of you. You see the subject property here outlined in red. It is just north of Coyle Middle School that you see, if you can see this, this is Coyle. This is the intersection of Morse Grove, Spring Valley, Old Alberton and Voiles. And, and, and this is the intersection, when you read the report, that all of the concerns that have been arisen from traffic generation really go into that four, that's a four-way stop right now. And, you know, it's estimated that they see probably, given the location of this and access and where vehicles are going to be going, when you leave this development, you could go right, but this is going to take you up into Hall in Madison County. Pittard Road will run you across, but if you're going towards Athens, it's a difficult left off of Pittard onto Highway 72. Probably 90-plus percent of trips entering and exiting this are going to go into this four-way stop, and especially with peak hour. School traffic sharing the same times with what's estimated at around 700 or 800 additional trips that would be generated during the school peak hour in the morning. That's what's triggering the concern in that intersection. And you'll see a condition in the report that deals with the need, if approved, to at a minimum put in a, a roundabout there as part of the first phase of the overall development. So enough about the traffic, but it was, it was a big issue in the report. Future land use, you see this is currently designated as rural and would, the request would require it to go to a traditional neighborhood designation. Zoning is AR, part of, of a larger, you know, AR-zoned area and immediately adjacent to our employment, industrial employment office zone properties within the Athena Industrial Park. Then the overall master plan as proposed here, it's oriented a little bit differently. It would be built in multiple phases, but it is a mixture, as indicated, with some flexibility built into it in, in terms of number of units. So that's why we've, when you're reading the report, some of the numbers appear not to add up. Like it says, single family at 543, but then it says 526 and 64. And they've intentionally built that into their proposal to try to create some, if approved, create some flexibility on especially some of the corners where they could be single family, they could be duplex-type units on corners. And that's the reason for kind of the difference in the numbering. But you see here, three points of access on to Old Alberton Road. And just for orientation purposes, again, this is the Pittard Road intersection. And then Coyle Middle School is just on the other side of this. This is a strip that runs back and serves about five homes, maybe six homes, potentially just to the rear that, and then Coyle Middle School's on the other side. Planning Commission recommendation, and I'd urge you on this one, you know, if you have not had a chance to go back and, and review the Planning Commission meeting, I think it would be valuable to do so. There was a lot of community input on this one, a lot of discussion. And we've tried to kind of summarize the, the position the Planning Commission took after a lot of debate on this one. But part of their recommendation for denial was that they really liked the design. They liked the mix of the housing type. It just felt really strongly that it was not in the appropriate location, given the traffic generation, the lack of multiple points in and out. It felt like it was a really big policy change in terms of future land use. Set a portion of the county that was intentionally designated as part of the Green Belt, adjacent to the industrial area. And, and there was concern over the potential of what 800 residential units could do to future industrial development groups looking at that property and perhaps becoming concerned based on, you know, that many houses, that close. Industrial generally looks for places to develop that are not close to houses because they tend to make noises and they can generate, you know, odor, truck traffic, things like that. And they, they tend to not want to be around a lot of residentially-stone property. And, and we've And we've intentionally created that Athena Park in an area with a lot of rural around it. So they did feel like it was a very significant shift in the future land use map as a policy. Had concern with the number of waivers and the other real big issue at this point is in order for this to be built, it would require a sewer extension into an area that was never really recognized or identified as as being an area that was to receive sewer because of its rural designation. Sewer's not there now. It would require a separate vote of the mayor and commission ultimately if it were to be approved. And it's our understanding that that would go along then with publicly funded maintenance long term of listation enforcement. Lot of stuff. If you've not watched Planning Commission meeting, go back, a lot of information in our report as well. But the Planning Commission's recommendation, and I believe this was a unanimous recommendation, both for future land use as well as zoning, was to not approve the request.
Thanks, Brad. And this is in Patrick's district.
Yes, the best district. So, um, Jesus Christ, um, like I'm at the time my family, I like the design of this project. I love the incorporation of green space, the walkability. But this project is a hell no for me because it's just not in the right. It's a beautiful project. It it just not, it's almost akin to putting a farm in the middle of downtown. Just that that's the infrastructure is just not there for the roads, for congestion as commissioned, as Brad stated, for the sewer lines, the fire services, the police services. It's closer, this project is approaching like, I believe, 794 homes. And if you go out and look at the area, it's very rural, it's industrial across the street. It is, it is not the right project for this area.
All right, thanks, Patrick. I've got Commissioner Parker.
Um, yeah, to add to that, a constituent brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago, a change.org petition urging people to vote no on this project. It was signed by 386 people, including, I believe, one of the city councilors of Winterville, Amanda Moody. And so I just wanted to bring some context to the amount of public input that's also been given on the project. Scrolling through some of the comments, they very much echo what the Planning Commission has said regarding terms about infrastructure, traffic, et cetera. And so I just wanted to make my fellow commissioners aware of that. And I'd I'll send you all the link to this via email if you want to take a look at yourselves.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any others?
I'd like to chime in, Mayor.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah, I I agree with Commissioners Parker and Davenport. I think this is, you know, the the architecture that they're showing in the packet is is really nice and the mix of housing types, you know, is something that I believe is really desirable in a large subdivision style project. But I agree, this is the wrong place. The infrastructure is not there. This is by design, you know, and long term plan intended to be a rural area. You know, I could see, you know, a much less dense housing project going in here. But I I agree, you know, that the traffic concerns, the infrastructure concerns, the fact that, you know, that the surrounding zoning, you know, is not conducive to commercial development that would serve 800 homes. I agree, this is the wrong place for it.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Thornton.
I just wanted to ask Patrick. Patrick, is this the same area that we went to last year or earlier that Old Alberton Road? Is this the same area?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this the same project, I should say?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I got you.
All right. Any others? All right. Thanks for that. All right, Brad?
Okay, next item, 155 Mitchell Street, again, a plan development. And you all are familiar with this one as it was before you a few months ago. There were some changes based on some discussions from the time it left Planning Commission originally. You know, dealing with potentially adding some additional affordable units, some other modifications that really all in combination rose to a level that it needed to be set back to the Planning Commission with the redesign. And so that's what you all voted to do. It has worked its way back through the Planning Commission and is back in front of you again this evening. It is a little different than the first time you saw it. It's same property, obviously, at 1.7 acres, same basic design in terms of the look of the buildings. They have added some additional density to it in addition to eliminating the commercial component that was on the ground floor that when you saw it the first time. There is a variance for buffer encroachment that has been previously approved. There is a 2017 plan development that is approved today, a little less dense than this one is. But, you know, if this one were, this one was basically asking to amend that one to add some additional units and some affordable components as well to this. But it but they've been very upfront from the beginning that this is intended to be a student oriented type of multifamily development. And accordingly, then, the affordable component that that they are wanting to build into would be a student based affordability to it would not, it would not be, you know, really the same as some of the other units that we've looked at, but they have not tried to hide that at all. They've been very open and upfront with us on that and including explaining how they would do it. Again, another, probably a good one, if if you've not watched Planning Commission, to go back and watch, because I think there was some good discussion between Mr. King and some of the Planning Commission members in terms of what affordability really means and how it would look in this type of a project. And, you know, this one's a little bit unique in that some of the affordable, the affordable beds that they are proposing as part of this project are put into, they're two bedroom apartments that each of the two bedrooms then has two beds in it. And so that's creating an opportunity for some affordability for the bed. But that makes up about 40 of the 65 affordable beds or in 20 of these two bedroom shared bed apartments as well. Five waivers requested, they are a little over 50 bedrooms over the 200 per acre max. That was created in part as part of them building in the 65 beds of affordability. A little bit of an increase on the 25%. Four more bedrooms to 27 and then a reduction in required parking in part based on proximity to the university. And again, just the property, and you all have seen these, I'll go through them quickly. Mitchell Street. Current zoning already has a plan development on it for more of a, it was more of an adult condominium type project, not a true student oriented multifamily. Now it was approved in seventeen. And then, you know, from a site plan standpoint, they really don't look a lot different. I think the architecture is very different from, this was the seventeen approval. And then I think you may have some information in your packet that are more of the rendered perspective drawings that really do more justice to the architectural elevations of what I've got here on this screen, but you should have all those in your packet as well. Parking. And then just existing conditions of the street, which I think were another concern raised by the Planning Commission, just the narrowness of Mitchell Street in this area. You can see from this top slide, immediately across the street, those are existing townhouses. And you can see the the property to the left. This was an older picture taken actually when the variance was being considered several years ago. Planning Commission recommendation on this one was to deny. They had some concern with the with the meaning of affordability as they're related to student housing. They were interested in the applicant's approach and wanting to work with the university to try to identify students that may be in need of this type of housing. But they felt pretty strongly regard to, you know, their primary concern with affordable housing in the community is more affordable family type housing than it is trying to provide affordable housing for students attending the university. They did have concerns with the increased density from the seventeen approval and traffic as well. So at the end, I think they had a good discussion with Mr. King, but ultimately voted to not approve. And I think this was a split vote, eight to one, one member of the Planning Commission not supporting the recommendation.
Thanks, Brad. And I think it's in District Four. Allison.
It it is. Thanks. Thank you, Brad. I think you continue to keep us up to date on this project because it is complicated, one that is already has an approved plan development that could be built, I guess, at any point as is, right? And to the modification of it, which I I think is an improvement for this location for student housing. Brad, part of, and this might be a better email follow up, but I'm reading through the information and I'm hearing residential units, dwelling units. I'm trying to get a clear picture so that we can understand the terminology of units versus beds versus bedrooms. Can you help us out? Or is that, I think an email is probably going to be a better follow up? Or do you have a summary?
I mean, I can try to summarize quickly, and I think we've tried to do that in the report as well, because it it's always been a little bit complicated when dealing with our multifamily ordinance, because we, there are multifamily dwellings and then there is multifamily density that counts bedrooms instead of the actual dwellings themselves, which is the makeup of your kitchen, living room and all the bedrooms within a single dwelling. So it's always been confusing with two. In this case, we've added a third component, which makes it even a little more, you know, confusing may be a fair word, you know, but I want to be clear. We pointed it out in our report that, you know, in addition to just the affordable bedrooms, there are also affordable beds that are sharing bedrooms. That was not something that they were trying to hide it by any means. It's just a different approach that we've not seen before. So, I mean, I think that's where it it becomes a little bit confusing. We calculate our density, which is where the 200 bedrooms per acre in the commercial downtown district occurs. We don't count how many beds are typically are put into a bedroom. So in this case, you know, what they are offering is to double up on the beds in about 20 of the apartments to provide 40 potentially affordable beds as as part of their overall product. So it's it's confusing.
Okay, well, I I I just wanted to make sure everybody understands it's confusing for all of us. So our acres, 200 beds, bedrooms an acre.
Yes.
But this project has two beds in a bedroom. And again, we can't get into kind of details of furnishings, but it does come out in this as well as a dwelling unit because they're asking for a waiver to have more units of four bedrooms or more.
That that's a percentage restriction at the 20, you can't have more than 25%. And part of their affordable component was, I believe it was five, five bedroom units in addition to the fours. And so that's what bumped them up over the 25% from a four or five bedroom unit for the dwellings. The 200 bedrooms per acre is across the board. It's a mix of all of your one, two and three, four, five bedroom apartments. But in this case, I think it's 1.7 acres at two, so that's 340 total bedrooms to get to maximum density. And I believe they're a little bit over that.
Right, there there 50 beds over and but that doesn't tell us, there bedrooms over. And you're saying that some of the bedrooms have two beds?
Yes.
So we don't know the bed out. And I guess my point is I want to make sure that our affordable housing and Commissioner Link might be able to speak to this because her she has a project that was designed to be affordable. And I think that, and also the project across the street from this where the original blind pig is, has those studios apartments. So somebody has a unit that they can afford. And I I don't want the affordability to sacrifice privacy and what we expect in a bedroom versus two beds in a bedroom is my first.
I think your initial request was probably the best one, and I tried to make it simple and I probably made it worse. But let me get an email that kind of outlines the the three different ways we look at it, what the numbers are as it relates to this project for you guys to to hopefully help clarify that. And I think Mr. King on the night of the voting meeting can certainly help that too. So, you know, because I think what the Planning Commission and the part of the discussion they got into with him, you know, dealt with, you know, they will rent, you know, buy the bedroom, but then on those affordable beds, you will pay less, but you're actually splitting the cost of a bedroom with somebody else. It's what it appeared to get down to, which is what makes it affordable. The actual bedroom itself may still rent for X, but you're only paying half as part of it being affordable.
Okay, okay. Well, thanks, thanks for that. And the other thing is, just as it being in my district, I do believe that this property has been sitting vacant since oh three is long enough and that we are ready for a higher, better use for it. And I think that there is a reality to the number of students that would be housed here who are no longer in our neighborhoods and that it does open up housing in a more traditional neighborhood. And so I'm going to just let others chime in and about it. And I I just, again, I want everybody to study so we know what we're talking about for when this vote comes forward. And that it was, came to us in February and there was a lot of input, which is why it went back because of all the the wants and the wishes. And so that's where we are now. Thanks, Brad.
I've got Commissioners Parker, then Link and Hool.
Um, so my understanding is that because there is a a plan development for this site already, that this will, if denied by the mayor and commission, have to come back to us again in a future form?
If they change the form, yes. I mean, a denial of this application by the mayor and commission, if that was to be your vote at your June meeting, would simply remove this application. The standing 2017 PD approval still is in place. So they could, they could still come into the office the very next day after the denial and submit full plans to build the 2017 approval.
Yeah.
They would be allowed to do so, but any further changes would have to come back again.
Gotcha, yeah. I mean, I think that if they have to, I mean, if it seems likely that if this is denied, that they might have to go back to the drawing board again and come back with something new, that does present us an additional opportunity to try to get a high, as Commissioner Wright said, a higher and better use for this with the in partnership with our inclusionary zoning program, once that is off the ground later this year, so that we do have firmer definitions of affordability and a mechanism by which that can be enforced. And so I'm certainly interested in us pursuing that rather than approving this as is. But as Commissioner Wright said, I'm going to continue to study the agenda item and see if I have additional questions between now and the meeting.
Commissioner Link?
Yeah, um, I I'd ask Brad if he if he could send us the previously approved plan development for that 2017 project so we can study that thoroughly as to what could currently be built by right according to that previous approval, which I want to remind everyone was also a rezone. This property, I believe, was originally zoned RM2, 25 bedrooms per acre. Am I correct, Brad?
It went from 24 beds an acre as RM2 zone property to the 200.
So there was massive, massive density increase and there was a lot of controversy surrounding this. There were dozens of people lined up at the podium. We probably got 100 emails, people opposed to this. And it was approved by the commission, a fairly split vote. But those who were in favor were won over by the proposal that it was going to be luxury senior condos and we were going to bring that demographic into downtown. And I'll continue to reiterate that I believe we are, we are full up on student housing downtown and we really need to spread that demographic out a little bit and we need to diversify. And um we need to diversify our housing stock downtown. And I'm not necessarily opposed to it being, you know, luxury housing because those folks need a place to live too. You know, we've seen the impact that an overabundance of students on our downtown has had in recent years on the economy of downtown, the culture of downtown, the the impact they've had during this pandemic. This training population impacting our community and basically running out folks who live here. So I am not in support of granting all these waivers for a student housing project, especially a project that, you know, in its origins, essentially displaced workforce housing. This property, when I, my early years in Athens, this was a diverse working-class neighborhood. That included students and and working-class folks who work downtown. Um you know, there were little cottages all throughout this area. The applicant spoke at the beginning, and he was misleading in saying this was vacant land. And um you know, this whole bringing in affordable student housing by making these students share a bedroom is kind of a cop-out. You know, that when we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about equitable housing. Um you know, if you're, and they're asking for an increase in density and then an an extra increase in density by making these kids share bedrooms, which they just don't do anymore. Even the dorms, they're not sharing bedrooms. It's it's really a shame that we, as a governing body, are put in this position of um you know, this this market impact of all these students on our community when UGA should be accommodating these students in need of affordable housing on UGA property, and they have the means to do that by state referendum that allows these companies to build on university property tax-free.
Commissioner Link, I'm gonna move on to Commissioner Hool.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I got two questions. The first is, I'm always curious about the rationale of the dissenters. I was wondering, Mr. Griffin, if you could maybe enlighten us on what what was expressed by that. Uh I think it was Joey Tucker, if I look at the pink sheet correctly, who was in favor of this? Or at least not in favor of the motion to deny?
I mean, I don't, I don't know that he was real vocal about it. He just, he felt like, you know, in his opinion, this was, you know, an appropriate location for student housing to be to be built, and just did not seem to share the same concerns that some of the other planning commissioners did from a standpoint of of the increased density.
Okay, thanks. Uh and then the other question, you know, this is a a smaller lot. I've wandered around some, you know, two thousand eight-era PDs that sit with roads and pipes and nothing else except some garbage people have dumped. And I'm I'm wondering, do we have a process for completion bonds? And is that something that we've exercised before when PDs happen? To avoid, you know, prime real estate getting bulldozed in in more rural areas and then never actually turning into housing or prime real estate downtown, just sitting vacant for twenty years?
We really, for for this type of a project, Commissioner, we don't have a completion bond for what would ultimately become a private development. You you start to pick them up in subdivisions where there is public infrastructure that will ultimately be accepted for ownership by the unified government. But there are bonds that are required to be put in place to ensure those are completed appropriately. But um you know, for a for a project like this, or for some of the larger student projects, we we really don't, you know, and it's kind of one of those things that generally you're maybe not as much on this one, although there are, there are significant investments to go into the preparation of the plans um to go through this process. Once you've gone through full engineering and paid the money to grade property and everything else, there is generally the only reason you're walking away at that point is that you've either run out of money or or something else bad has happened. And you know, at that point, I'm not sure how much good the bond is either. But um it's a long way of saying, no, we don't have one for private developments.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, everyone. Um Brad, I'm remembering the last time this property came to us, when it still had a commercial component, but was going to be a student deal. And I remember that was a split vote too, but I think it was more favorable toward the project, even though the recommendation was for denial. Am I remembering that right?
That's, that's, that's correct, five-four, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, and I think, and again, I don't want to put words in the mouth of the planning commission. That's why I'd encourage you to go back and watch the tape if you have not on YouTube. But you know, I I think part of it that swayed some of the people that had initially supported it was the method by, twofold, the method by which the affordable product was being offered um in that it was simply to share the bedrooms and and would ask about the price point. It appeared to be, at the end of the day, the two-bedroom unit as a whole was probably going to pay as much rent as the one-bedroom unit in the market rate, it's just being split by two people. Um I think that that concerned some of them. And then also the issue that when this was presented to them first, I believe they were at least in negotiations and discussions with the land trust about some type of oversight of the affordable units. And I think that is is no longer on the table as well, and I think that concerned them also.
Thanks, that's that's helpful. And and certainly, you know, there's always going to have to be, one would always, let me say, one would always hope for an affordable product for students, you know, e- even at a flagship university like UGA that, you know, is largely well-heeled. Still twenty percent of their student population receives Pell Grant, so we know that's the case. And, you know, I've, you know, as we've discussed even in our general zoning discussions around CD, you know, favorable toward some areas where ground floor commercial would not be required, and and I would include this, given it's sort of off the beaten path location. But um but but I have to say, I have never seen a project that sold itself as affordable where you put two human beings in a room, and that's the way you achieve the result. Uh Minneapolis has an affordable inclusionary zoning component for students specifically. They've got that as a an element of their zoning code, but this is not the way they achieve it, sort of through the dorm or almost kind of flop house mechanism. So anyhow, very curious. All right, uh circling back, Commissioner Wright?
Let Commissioner Link go, I forgot what I was gonna say.
Great, Commissioner Link?
Um you know, I'm also kind of thinking about how this developer is going about this project as exclusively student, you know, where we've worked with other developers recently, or at least I have who are going for a student demographic, but they are designing some of these ground floor units where they have their own separate entrances, so they might be conducive to regular folks. You know, your assistant professor who wants to live near campus or whatever, where they're not necessarily sharing the hallways with the student population, but they can still live downtown and have their own doorway to their apartment. So um you know, I don't understand why, you know, I'd be willing to grant a waiver for ground floor residential for that kind of design um where you might get a little more diversity in this housing type.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I'm ready now. Uh well, on that note, Commissioner Link, I think that it's already been proven that when affordable housing is in a mixed unit, that um it's uncool to have them have separate entrances.
I thought you were talking about affordability.
But well, yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying, getting the diversity. But um it's um, this this group has done this uh in other, you know, communities. I understand our standards are such that we um expressed that in February, and I think that they're learning what that means to us. Again, we don't want to lose quality with the affordability. Um I I do understand, I I don't understand the adult that would want to live in a student housing environment similar to another project that we passed. But but again, I'm I'm trying to be open-minded about that. But they do have staff that'll be um hired uh and and involved in this building. And um I think that for us to ask a person to do something that we aren't ready to supply, I've tried to describe it as when we changed or you couldn't put your leaf and limb or leaves in plastic bags, you had to use paper bags. I mean, as a government, when we made that requirement, we had to at least make sure people could buy the paper bags. And right now, we're asking um entities to do things that we don't have the mechanisms for. And that's um at this, this process is when Athens Land Trust was asking for to quit having to, you know, not to volunteer their time to to validate this stuff, and they they also can't do it for student housing because that means that then they'd be trying to validate family and the student. So um quite frankly, with the market that we have, I thought that the mechanisms that they had in place and practiced in other university towns was um admirable. Uh but I do believe that we need the quality of a room um with the bedroom instead of shared bedroom.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, um Brad, uh one more project and then a couple of other items.
All right. Okay, next item is one more rezoning and then three more. Forty-four thirty, forty-four thirty-two Lexington Road. This is a straight rezoning request from commercial neighborhood to commercial general. Um it is two parcels that make up just a little over four acres. They went to the planning commission as a straight zoning. They were showing a concept plan for self-service storage, but it was not binding in any way. And planning commission asked for them to consider making that a binding use in association with the rezone. Uh they agreed to that, went back and modified the plan slightly, and then brought it back to the planning commission at their meeting last month. So what you have here, you see the subject property here. And it's currently two parcels. Zone commercial neighborhood right next to the park. Uh the future land use of general business, which is compatible with the request to go to CG zoning. See here, the proposed zoning change would take it from CN to CG. No sewer on this property right now, which was one of kind of the, it became one of the real big talking points from a staff standpoint. That was part of what we had concerns with in terms of increasing the intensity of the commercial zone without sewer in place. Planning commission felt with the commitment from the applicant to put in a use such as self-service storage, that certainly justified the lack of sewer at the location for the CG zoning. So this ultimately, if approved, becomes the binding site plan. Um this will be similar to to some of the other self-service storage facilities we've seen that have been built recently. We're in that the building that you see fronting Lexington Road would would be one that had the fenestration on the front of it. If you're familiar with the one that was just built across from Lowe's on Cherokee Road, that front building that faces Cherokee actually has glass on it, and you go into a an interior space to then access the roll-up doors. So you're not seeing those roll-up doors from the street as you drive by. This would be the same type of design. Uh planning commission, after the binding plan was put in place, recommended, and I believe it was unanimous, I guess it was, to approve the rezoning from CN to CG with the condition of the binding site plan. And it was a unanimous vote.
Thanks, Brad, and Patrick, you've got this one too.
Yep, definitely. So I'm, I have mixed feelings about this project. And I do encourage my colleagues to watch the planning, um planning commission YouTube video. But the the thing, um so some of you guys, or hopefully all of you guys um have received emails from Kasan residents. Just the east side is, it seems to be proliferated with these storage units. We got the big massive one um at Cherokee and uh Cherokee and Lexington. That's not even at full capacity. We have the Devon um facility right next door to that back cock, I'm from Lexington as well. And then we have storage facilities behind McDonald's where the Aaron's rental is. And so it it just, for a land use change, which is, you know, is complimentary for a future land use to, for this project, excuse me, um I just think we could find better uses for this piece of property. It's right next door to a beautiful park, um very wooded. But I look forward to hearing from the applicant Friday, Mr. Pittman, Pittman. And I look forward to um getting feedback from my colleagues.
Thanks, Patrick. Um see, uh I can't see everybody on screen, I see Commissioner Link and Commissioner Hool.
Yeah, um I share Commissioner Davenport's concerns about this. A storage unit facility is just not a desirable use for a piece of property on our gateway corridor. Um you know, I know the one popped up just down the road at the corner of Cherokee, and you know, I don't see that as bringing any vibrancy to that that part of the east side. Um and I feel like the east side is kind of the dumping ground for these kinds of things. You know, something like this in the industrial zone or, you know, back road. But this is a gateway corridor. We took, we're talking a lot about our corridors these days and corridor beautification. We're also talking a lot about um walkability and especially walkability to our recreational facility. You do have some neighborhoods around here and some density not far away. Um we're, you know, we're talking about getting proper bike facilities all the way down Lexington Highway so people could ride their bikes to the park. You're riding your bike, you're not going to stop and get an ice cream at the storage facility. I feel like there really are much, much better uses for this. What I see is a very valuable piece of property right next to a park. There's lots of things that can be done there, um you know, lots of patrons possibly coming from that park. And I understand this sewage connection issue, but there are plenty of vibrant that don't require um large sewage capabilities.
All right, Commissioner Hool?
Thanks. Yeah, I'm not a fan of storage units either. I think the proliferation of these sorts of things are kind of dystopian. I don't know what I hate more, these or parking lots, but I'm not really eager to see more of either. I mean, maybe if it was like doubling as a solar farm on all the roofs or something, but this is just uh not something I'm enthused about.
All right, any others?
I I just, I have a question. Um I kind of share the same feelings as my colleagues here, but just to clarify, on the back part of this property, it's very close to the skateboard park. Is that another building? Is there any, um I know that Commissioner Davenport mentioned Far Woods, but I can't remember. That seems really close. So um could you give me any information about what is actually back there and what would be facing that area of the park? Or actually both sides of the park?
I can. Um there is a, there's a tree save area in this location along what would be the eastern property line. I mean, it's kind of scrubby, but there's vegetation in there that will be saved. Um this is a stormwater facility, so it's a stormwater pond. But then again, another area of trees between it and the edge of the park. See if I can get back to the aerial. Yeah, it's it's, it's wooded now with some with some understory stuff and pines. But but this would be, yeah, that's the proximity of stormwater pond to, you see the skate park there. And it looks like an access road to to a maintenance area.
And and is the um, that's a tractor supply next to it?
Yes, ma'am.
So does that have sewer?
No.
Okay, that that's on some septic there, I guess.
As far as I know, I think it's septic as well.
And how, and how is that zone?
Commercial neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any follow-up?
Uh yeah, Mayor, I I'll, I think I'm I'm kind of in agreement with everyone here about um there's, there's a, there's a lot of storages. I I used to live close by in this area, and there is, there's a lot of storage units. They're not a good use of land. From what I've seen in my, in like looking into this, um they're obviously not very uh reusable for reuse later on, adaptable for reuse for other uses. And then another thing, we talk about like, you know, we're, we're talking about the like economic- no, we're, we're talking about the like economic impact of these things. One of the reasons that we see some of these things popping up as profitable businesses is because they have such low operational costs because they don't produce jobs. They'll have one person, if that, working this entire thing, but it doesn't even create jobs. Um it just creates a place for us to put all the things that we don't need that we keep buying. Um and and yeah, and and the location right next to our park, I agree. I mean, we're trying to make this walkable. That's a fantastic park. Um I would love to see, yeah, restaurant or another retail business or something else coming in there rather than just more storage units. It's, yeah, it's depressing.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, no, the question of other uses, did I hear, did I hear uh Brad say that maybe I'm, oh, it's getting late, maybe I'm getting my agenda items mixed up. But did I hear him say that it wasn't compatible with other uses because of some of the infrastructural, um the existing infrastructure on the site?
Yeah, I mean, part of, part of the staff recommendation, um which was prior to them going back to a binding development plan was that we felt like that there were plenty of compatible uses as zoned with CN. It does put some restrictions in terms of size of retail and restaurant and things like that, where if you go to commercial general, it it removes a lot of those restrictions and then also allows some more intensive potential uses. Um that was, that was our, part of our justification to not support the rezoning from staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Wright?
Oh, thank you. Um I I I agree that we have plenty of um storage facilities. There was a new one built in my district. Um but I I think we should be careful about really demeaning um a certain business. Uh there are different reasons why people have to use storage units. Sometimes um they're in between dwellings and it's a in in expensive place to store their items in between leases. Um I had, uh anyway, we we had the, had the need to have a storage unit, um one of the existing ones, and they had very attentive staff. Uh it was temporary for us. Um and I was amazed at the different neighbors we had in storage units. A lot of people rent storage units for their office. They like go there for the day and use the wifi and have their inventory there. It I mean, and I mean, it speaks to the creativity that people use for affordability of a clean uh wifi, um if it's climate control or depending on it. But anyway, there, there's a variety of needs. I I agree that this isn't needed in our inventory, but um there's a lot to be learned for um the type of people that do need to use storage units. And our, and there's clearly a supply and demand for it. Um but I I appreciate the input about the ones that are already out here um that 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 we don't need more.
Definitely encourage anybody who hasn't seen any of the professional literature on the proliferation of these to seek some of that out. You can find a lot of stuff. Not crazy long ago, there was a piece on that NPR show Marketplace. Um but yeah, there's been a national explosion of these. Um and and you can find a lot of reasons for that. But um any further input before we move on to the uh the the non-project?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Is there anything we can do to change like how storage units could be built by right? So you know, at least when these sorts of things are going in, there's more density or it's not totally just impermeable pavement everywhere, you know, something that could, you know, set up an expectation around if you're going to build storage units. I mean, the point's well taken by Commissioner Wright that people do use these. There is a, there is a use for them in our society, even in our community, you know. Um but a lot of times, they're just these kind of unattractive concrete boxes on a bunch of pavement, bad for the climate, bad for the environment. I mean, is there a way that we can maybe examine looking at changing what can be built by right in terms of storage units?
And certainly any of our zoning categories have a kind of grid in the i- in the code about uh not only allowable uses, but design contours around them. And you heard Brad reference earlier that the project over on Cherokee has a sort of glass facade, you know, so um so you have a sense of it being a fenestration rather than it just being a a blank wall. But um certainly encourage folks to take a look at that code and maybe take a look at some projects and think about, you know, what what elements they would want to see. I don't know, Brad, if you want to?
No, I was gonna say, I was gonna say the same thing. There, we do have the ability, we, you all do, um to amend the ordinance to place limitations on uses within certain zoning districts. And it may be that that you're completely fine with this type of a storage, you know, unit design in an industrial area, but if it's going to be in commercial areas along corridors, you know, you need, you would like to see some standards added to it. But I mean, you've got to determine what those standards would be first and then, you know, try to work them into a limited use and then determine where you want those limitations to be and what zones. So it can be done, but it's a, it's a little more complex.
Yeah, good example of um a a different context for a use that's allowed in some places and not others. Um certainly, there are a lot of places where restaurants can be found, but you can only put drive-throughs in in certain corridors, for example, so.
Mm-hmm.
All right, lots to chew on there. All right, Brad, uh um the 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 seem to be former Odd Street.
Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry that I'm not stopping my sharing, but it it seems like when I stop and then go back, it changes the way I can advance. And I'm afraid if I do it one more time, I'm not going to be able to advance anymore.
Yeah, it worries.
I apologize for that. Next item is the street name change uh request to change Odd Street from Flint Street to First Street, which I believe is the two hundred to the five hundred blocks, to Rosenell Howard Street. This, this came to you first. It actually started back in twenty nineteen, probably November, December of nineteen. Um when it, when it was first requested, it has worked its way through um the the process. And you've got a pretty extensive package of information in front of you uh with a lot. There was a lot of groundwork that um that was done by Mrs. Lyle, who made the request. Uh you know, boots on the ground up and down the street. I think she tried to talk to everybody that that lives on the street, at least knocked on their doors and reached out to them. Um so it's, it's an interesting packet of information that that was submitted and she did all of that work. But you see here, this is, this is the section, that is the, with the, where the red line is, that's the two hundred through five hundred blocks of Odd Street that would would undergo the name change. The first block of Odd Street that you see down here between MLK and Flint would remain as Odd Street for the single block. We did send out the notices to join property owners and residents. Planning Commission heard the request at their meeting. Um and then it will ultimately come to you for your June meeting for a vote. Um if approved, thirty parcels would be readdressed. Uh we don't see any issues with the selected name in terms of confusion with service delivery or emergency services. And the Planning Commission recommendation was unanimous to approve the proposed street name change.
Thanks Brad. And uh Commissioner Parker, this in your stomping grounds.
Oh, yeah. The Flint Street right there. I'm literally around, for six years practically, live right around the corner from Odd Street. Uh I got a lot of neighbors who are good friends and folks that talk to you a lot about this particular um street name changing is, you know, it does, even though many see the value in honoring the history of the street and uh Athenians who have contributed a lot to our community, there are some concerns about the inconvenience of, you know, getting your address changed, et cetera. But ultimately, you know, I have to commend the work of Miss Lyle and stomping the block and getting and getting the word out about um uh Miss, Miss Howard and how much she has given to her community. Um and the need for us to commemorate her through this name change. And so I do look forward to enthusiastically supporting um this name change. And I'll, and I'll save, I have additional comments, but I'll save those for the voting meeting, um where I hope more of my constituents are probably tuned in.
Thanks for that. Anyone else? All right, and we've got, go ahead.
I got one question. It's not usual that we see a request for and against. I was just curious if we get clarification for why this is against somebody?
Yeah, it is. Honestly, Commissioner, it is, it is unusual, in my experience doing this with street name changes, that we didn't, that we only had one against, um just for the nature of of perceived inconvenience. Um the, the individual that spoke in opposition to this actually, and she indicated she had no issues with, with Mrs. Howard or really, you know, she said that she felt strongly that there were other things in the, in the neighborhood there that should be addressed first before taking on a street name change. But they really weren't, they were not within the same purview of what was being requested or what the Planning Commission asked for or what their role was, so.
Okay. And I, I mean, I'm excited to see this happen. I think Miss Lyle's, you know, been at this for a long time. So I I I guess I'm just curious, um if, you know, we vote to approve this hopefully in a couple of weeks here, when does uh, when do the signs change? When do the addresses change? What's the timeline look like for people?
I mean, that, you know, part of, part of a street name change like this, you know, it is part of of your consideration at your voting meeting would be, you know, making the determination that the gut, that Athens Clark County was going to pay for the street name changes. It's kind of been inferred up to this point, given the nature of this street name change request. But um I have seen them in the past where somebody asked for it and it was, they were required to do it. So um, you know, I, we would send out letters again to everybody, letting them know that the official action had been taken and that who we were notifying. I mean, we, under the ninety-two policy, there's a list of, of service providers that we will also reach out to and let them know of the proposed name change. Um and, you know, and then from that point, it would be a matter of working with traffic engineering to determine scheduling and and workloads as to when it would be changed.
So I guess just ballpark to set community expectations, like if there's, is there a range that you're imagining this would take, shortest to longest?
Uh yeah, probably if it, probably a month. Yeah, and I, we would probably, we would work with traffic engineering, try to make a determination of when they could do it. Um because I do think it's helpful to at least give an expectation in the letter that it is anticipated that the proposed street name change will occur on or around July first, for example, or July fifteenth, or to give them some understanding to.
Thanks Brad.
Mm-hmm.
All right, anyone else on this? All right, and I know we've got a couple of text amendments too.
Do, um. Just want to get to these. Okay, we have two for you. The first one you're all very familiar with. Um this is the new proposed street naming policy that GOC worked on for many months and then ultimately came to you as a full commission. Uh it was forwarded to the Planning Commission for their consideration. It returns to you largely unchanged. Um there was a little bit of discussion regarding the wording of B one that talks about who makes up the seventy-five percent um that occurred at the Planning Commission meeting. Um we feel like we've got that taken care of by simply listing that it's not less than seventy-five percent of all individuals and or entities who own property. Question became if, you know, one property, for example, is owned by multiple people, do they get multiple votes? And they would be considered an entity. And again, understand that this is, you know, that seventy-five percent requirement is simply to get it submitted on the agenda. It it does not guarantee that you all would support it. Um and you, you still have the fallback built into here that you worked on before you forwarded the Planning Commission, that at any time, you know, a, a commission member, you know, could send a request forward as well. So, you know, if it was a situation where there were strong feelings, but they were not able to get the full seventy-five percent, but you all as an elected body felt strongly uh about doing it anyway, you have that right to initiate the process as well. So um but it does require more upfront work. It requires that work to be done under this, under this ordinance amendment on the ground before it comes through the process, instead of, you know, the way it works now, somebody shows up um at a meeting in front of you all, makes a request, it makes sense, you know, what they're asking for. And then the process starts and and so if there are people with concerns, they feel like, you know, that the ball's already started rolling and we can't stop it. So we've tried to front load it a little bit and um, you know, the, the work that Mrs. Lyle did on, on Odd Street would would be exactly what we're looking for to be done in advance of the submittal. So that's um, Planning Commission's recommending that this tax amendment be approved.
Thanks Brad. Any questions about this one? All right, uh we got one more text amendment.
All right, and this next one, this is one that comes to you purely from your planning staff. Um we don't send these up a lot that are totally staff initiated, but this one is. Um it is a request for you all to consider modifying our lot coverage allowance in the single family section, which is section nine seven of the zoning ordinance. Right now, each single family zone has a specific lot coverage allowance. How much of your lot can you cover with your driveway and your sidewalk and your buildings? Um anything that is considered to be impervious to rainwater. Um but there's always, we've always had issues with the RS twenty-five zone um in terms of, when we have variance requests, when we have people that are coming in and they're busted on their lot coverage, they want to put a shed in their backyard and they, they're over on lot coverage, it just seems like it's always in RS twenty-five. Um and when you look at the chart, it it's kind of a sliding scale, but for whatever reason, twenty years ago, the percentage in RS forty, which is a lot size of about an acre, and RS twenty-five, which is a lot size of about a half an acre, the percentage is the same. And then it starts to progressively move up. So what we're asking um for you all to consider is to simply modify RS twenty-five to give them an extra ten percent, so it becomes more of a sliding scale from one end to the other. And and we feel like would would relieve some of those lot coverage issues that we deal with on a regular basis in the Cedar Creeks and the Kingswoods and some of those neighborhoods that uh Green Acres gets, we we get a lot of it in there. Um we feel like it makes sense and we hope you would certainly support it, but if not, we understand.
Thanks Brad. Any questions about that?
Can we put our consent?
Sorry, wish you could.
Wish. I uh before we move on to our uh brief forecon session, I think Manager Williams had one item too that I actually um failed to bring up when we were talking about roadway maintenance.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh staff learned late last week and I found out today that um GDOT had just announced uh some grant funds that we could use for road striping and marking. Uh it's about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um we think that we can use some already approved capital funds as a match. And so I just wanted to uh say that tonight, if y'all are okay. I know it's a late date, but to to capitalize on it, we're going to put together an agenda item along those lines and put it in the cycle if the mayor agrees.
Thanks, Blaine. I appreciate it. All right, uh as uh men- mentioned a little bit ago, um item number seventeen uh concerns the tax allocation district on Lexington Road. And so this is the first tax allocation district request that has been brought forward by a developer and then reviewed by the Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee or TAC. Um and so uh very briefly, we're going to go through the history of the request. Uh the developer is going to explain their request in a short presentation. And then um we're going to hear from staff, the recommendation of the Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee. So um uh go ahead and turn it over uh Blaine to you or uh your designee.
Thank you, Mayor. And Ilka, would you like to go ahead and share? Uh we have Dr. Ilka McConnell uh on with us, our Economic Development Director, and she and I are going to tag team, uh as the mayor said. Uh I might speak at the beginning. She and I both may have some comments and the developer will make a presentation. Uh Dr. McConnell will finish at the very end with with uh reflections from the uh and a and a recommendation from the TAC Advisory Committee.
Good evening. Um Todd, could you please um enable sharing for me so I can share my screen? Good evening. Um, Tom, could you please, um, enable sharing for me so I can share my screen?
You, you should be able to. I just clicked on it and it takes just a second to enable, but, uh.
Okay.
See if it'll work now for you.
Not so far. I don't see the share button enabled. It's kind of grayed out.
Okay. Yeah, so I just had given it to Brad. If he took his toys and ran off with them. Oh, it's.
I'm, I'm still here if there's something I need to do, but I, I don't know what it is.
Let's see, is, is, so Brad says.
My, my share is gone now too.
Yeah.
Well.
Huh.
Let me see, um.
Well, while, while she, well, go ahead, uh, Ilka. Were you gonna ask?
I'm always looking around like, who's he talking to? And he says, Dr. McConnell. I'm going to try to email you this, um, PDF that I have. I've kind of put, um, our slides plus the developer's presentation into the same. Thing and that way, um, hopefully you can share it from your computer.
I don't have. If you want to send it to the mayor.
Yeah, yeah, if, I'll, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay.
Glad to. I am glad to operate some simple machinery.
Thank you.
Presentation, so we could just look at it on our laptops?
Um.
Well, for, for the public, uh, I want to be able.
Yeah, for them to be able to see.
Do this.
Did you receive it, Mayor?
I have not yet.
Okay.
Well, Mayor, in the interest of Tom, I can start, uh, talking until you, uh, get that up. Uh, anticipating you'll get it in the next couple of minutes.
Got it.
Uh, so, uh, for everyone's benefit, uh, you know, last year. Uh, actually going back two years ago, the mayor and commissioner expressed interest in creating a tax allocation districts and. Using that tool that's, uh, given to local governments, uh, in Georgia by the legislature through the Redevelopment Powers Act. Uh, and last year, very end of last year, the mayor and commissioner, uh. Designated six redevelopment areas and associated tax allocation districts. Um, right about the time that that approval, um, took place. Uh, the developer, uh, on Lexington Road was interested in finding out about any incentives for affordable housing. Uh, and, uh, had met several times with Commissioner Parker. And and I was invited to, uh, meet with them, uh, virtually. And, man, my advice was, well, you might consider the TAD, uh, as opposed to trying to go for. You know, uh, I think they had talked about tax abatements or something along those lines. So, uh, this was tracking with the implementation of the TADS. Uh, y'all had, uh, the mayor and commission had, uh, asked that a. TAD advisory committee made up of residents and business owners of the geographic areas. Uh, be put into place to to receive applications for assistance. Uh, as well as to help identify, uh, potential projects or community benefits that were germane to. Each individual district. And so, uh, right out of the gate, um, we had this, uh. You know, proposal from a developer within the Lexington Road TAD, the mayor appointed. Uh, a number of residents to. A T, a TAD advisory committee, a TAC. Uh, and those folks have, uh, had to very quickly, uh, uh, get, uh, you know. Educated on what TADS are and what the redevelopment area was and what your intentions were. And they have done a marvelous job and I think, uh, very thoughtful in their deliberations. You know, and they've had to respond very quickly because the developer was interested in, in, you know, advancing. A proposal. And so they have met multiple times within the last thirty, forty-five days. Uh, they've deliberated on this, they have talked about, and I think now fully understand, you know, the need for, uh. Some good planning, um, you know, looking at the district, looking at data, looking at past plans. And finding out and helping to telegraph to y'all what their feelings are. On community benefits and projects that benefit to the Lexington Road, uh, TAD area. Um, so that, that's in a nutshell, the first slide of the presentation you've yet to see. Um, Mayor, have you been able to pull it up?
I, I, I have been able to pull it up, but it will not let me share a screen. It will let me share either a document or a whiteboard. And, um. Uh, so I'm not sure why it would let Brad share a bit ago, but it won't let me. Share what's on my. Second monitor.
Did Brad break it?
I think he did, I.
See, and, and now, Mayor, my share is lit back up again, like I could share it, so.
Send it, send it to Brad.
I'm gonna send it to Brad.
To me, yeah. Let me see if I can get it up.
Thank you.
Apologize for the delay, everyone.
Yeah, no, it's, it's the same here.
We take a two-minute break? While this gets figured out?
Uh. Yeah, I, I, I don't think it'll take that long.
Take a break as needed.
Y'all haven't been taking a break this whole time?
I mean, yeah, Mariah tell them, take a break as needed.
Mariah, you're lingering in the ether with no camera on you the whole time.
I know, I know.
No idea what I'm up to over here.
Yeah. Yeah. We missed you today, Mariah at the park.
Oh, yeah, I gotta, I had to get pricked a bunch of times at the OBGYN, so.
Everything good? Is everything okay?
But, uh, wasn't feeling too good, too hot at the time, but.
Right, right.
I'll let y'all catch me up later.
You want to give us any information? Do we know male, female?
We, I, we have a little boy.
Oh, ooh.
August twentieth. Woo-hoo. Think my audio might have cut out. Can y'all hear me?
Yep.
Okay, never mind.
Oh, yeah, we, we just heard the big announce, gender announcement.
Okay.
It's out there.
Celebrating. I thought maybe she was like. I don't know, making some, making some noise over there, but, alright, alright, we're back, we're back.
Thank you, Brad.
I want to thank Brad for running AV for us tonight. So, uh, you can go ahead and advance it, Brad. So as the mayor pointed out, uh, you know, I've just kind of gone through the history and timeline. Um, developer strategic capital partners here is to present, they have presented previously to the TAD advisory committee. Um, the way that the redevelopment plan reads is that the TAD, the TAD, uh, advisory committee. Would receive an application and then share review and comment to the mayor and commission, which. That will, uh, come after the, the developer presentation. Uh, but the way the redevelopment, uh, plan language reads is that you, as the mayor and commission, would ultimately receive the proposal. And either approve, deny, or modify it. And so that's where we are in the process. Uh, and, um. Dr. McConnell, anything else you'd have before we turn it over to the developer?
Um, maybe a, a few comments about the, um, community benefits agreement that was also included with the agenda item?
Yes, thank you. So, so the action, uh, you're being asked to do is to. Is to consider, uh, this community benefits agreement. And Attorney Drake, uh, and Attorney Dan McCray have drafted this first. Template, which of course can be used for future projects. Uh, the community benefits agreement is vernacular that, uh, you had put into the redevelopment plan. And basically, the, the, the basic terms of the, the community, uh, benefits agreement. Are the, the, the proposal of the developer reflected. Uh, you know, and, uh, as you'll hear, you'll see how they have tried to fashion their community benefits to be in. Line with the, uh, the goals that you set for the redevelopment plan.
And, uh, is Mark presenting? Just want to make sure I'm unmuting the right person.
I think, uh, Jacob, Jacob Everett and Will Zink will present. Um. Jacob's with McGuire Sponsel, Will Zink is with Strategic Capital Partners and, um, Mark. Becker Beecher is with, um, Trinitas, which is the master developer for the property.
I see. Mark. And then, uh. But Aaron Bartels and Brendan. Mahv.
And Jacob Everett.
I don't see Jacob. Oh, there, there's Jacob, I see now.
And Will Zink.
Will, Will's having trouble getting in.
Okay.
He's in, but it won't let him like unmute or. Turn on the video. Is that something you can control, Mayor?
Um, I, I, I don't see Will. I, I, I see an Aaron and a Brendan.
Yeah.
Guys, I gotta go undo the alarm real quick in the building before it goes off, so if I don't advance for just a second, I'll be right back.
Alright, so, uh, i- is, is everybody up that, uh, needs to be?
I believe so.
Okay.
Alright, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Guys, we're having technical problems. Um, Will is on speaker with me and I'm hoping that you all will be able to hear him as well. Sorry, this is not ideal.
Thanks for being with us this evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can, yes.
Okay.
Apologies, but it's, I'm, I can see the, uh, whiteboard. I'm, uh, just, it, the unmute and the shares all grayed out. I don't, I'm not sure why I'm, I'm being able to join some, uh, a panelist, I'm, I guess I'm, uh.
W- Will, you've just popped up in my, uh, in my window. Is someone gonna make you a panelist?
Nope, here we go.
And so Will, are you gonna be speaking from the?
Hear me now? Hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Great. Sorry about that. Ilka, are you able to pull up our slides?
Yeah, so your slides are part of the same deck and it looks like, um, Brad may be back now and is going to be able to, um. You can just let him know when you're ready to go to the next slide.
Yeah, Will, just let me know when to advance.
Okay. Um, well, thank you all for, uh, the time and let us present our, um, project and, um, our TAD request. Um, I think, uh, you know, you've seen this project before when Trinitas, uh, presented it earlier this year. Um, we've been, uh, talking to Trinitas for a while about how to integrate workforce housing into some of their projects. And this project in Athens became a, a great candidate, um, as we knew about the need for workforce housing, housing in Athens. Um, and the quality market rate project they were going to build, which is similar to the projects, uh, we build for workforce housing, uh, class A. Market rate housing, so, um, we, uh, have, you know, joined forces to try to, um. Uh, add additional, uh, workforce housing units to, uh, the Trinitas project along, uh, Lexington Road. Um, so I guess, uh, we go to the next slide. And, um, I don't know if you've seen this rendering before, this is, uh, a view from Lexington Road showing the, uh. The building that we would propose to build, um, that would be exclusively workforce housing. Um, go to the next slide, I can kind of tell about the, the project. We would propose to build a, a standalone hundred and twenty unit building. Um, mix of studios, ones and twos on a, on the three acre site that's right, um, the frontage of forty, which we think is, uh. The best part of the total site. Our, our project would be about a twenty-one million dollar project, um, with workforce housing. We, we're doing is we build a quality, class A product, um, and don't look to try to, uh, get low, get to lower rents by. Dropping, um, construction costs, so there is a, a, a gap and we usually work with municipalities. Uh, to fill that gap here, um, you know, we, we originally started talking about tax payment, but got into the TAD and thought that was a great. Use to, to capture the increment that Trinitas is creating and we're creating to fill that two million dollar gap. To really, uh, ta- go out and target a different, uh, workforce segment than, than the Trinitas project. We're looking at, uh, incomes in the sixty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI range. Um, AMI stands for area median income. And so at, uh, sixty to a hundred and twenty percent in Athens is, uh, twenty-eight thousand to fifty-seven thousand in twenty-twenty-one. And that's put out, uh, every year updated by HUD. And so it's a pretty straightforward process. They, um, they calculate those incomes and those ranges and they actually provide. A, uh, through their low income housing tax cutter program, a rent, um, that's associated with each of those, uh, increment bands. Um, so it's a, it's a pretty unique way to fill a gap that, uh. Uh, hasn't really been hit. There's a lot of developers doing market rate housing, a lot of developers doing low income housing. There's been a, a, a missing middle, um, and it's a complicated process to try to hit those, uh. Those rents and still provide a class A project, but that's kind of, um, what we're here today is to propose on how we can, how we can do that. Um, so we've been, uh, working with as well the land use authority. On, uh, to make this project, uh, workforce housing in perpetuity. And so we have an operating agreement with them on how we will, um, calculate incomes and rents. And then we've also, uh, agreed to, uh, reduce, uh, take out a utility allowance out of the rent on top of the. Uh, HUD rate, um, and that's been, uh, um. Memorialized in a land use restriction that will, uh, be tied to the project for, for perpetuity, which is unique for workforce housing. Um. We go to the next slide. This is just, you know, an aerial showing the Trinitas project in the background and our proposed workforce building along Lexington. Next slide, please. Um, this is this, the overall site plan, north is on your left, uh, showing the frontage and then the, uh, Trinitas project to, uh. As it goes, um, to the right. Next slide, please. This is a, a site plan of our project. Um, it shows, um, the layouts, uh, and, uh. The different unit types. We'll have a, a, uh, you know. Market rate amenities, there's a pool on the very south end. Uh, we'll have a gym, um, coffee bar, leasing center, um, sitting area. You know, it's a, anything you would find in a, a class A market rate project. Um, next slide, please. These are, uh, some facade. Next slide. Um, you know, why we thought this project qualified and made sense for the TAD, you know, as we build these two projects. Trinitas and, um. Strategic Capital Partners project, um, there's a lot of synergies, a lot of increment created. We thought, you know, in your, uh, TAD priority list, housing opportunities is listed as number two. So we thought this would be a great housing opportunity and a great, uh, example of what can be done with TAD dollars. Um, like I said, you know, um, perpetuity of affordable workforce rents, um, is, had been worked out with. Uh, land trust, um, and I guess a point of clarification, um, so Trinitas' project, uh, required a fifteen percent set aside for workforce. So they're building sixty-six, they're gonna put sixty-six units of a four, uh, workforce housing in the project. What we're really bringing to the table is we're, we're saying we can go, uh, above and beyond that with the, uh, help of Athens. And so we can build an additional fifty-four units, um, to get to that one twenty. Um, and the whole one twenty would be, uh, workforce in perpetuity, but I think it creates a better project, it gives more units. Um, it allows us to, um, differentiate the product type, but also have, uh, a class A quality project. Um, but we get a bigger bang for the buck, um, as I go, I'll go into later, um. Uh, how, how the subsidy would be used and why you get, uh, more units for a smaller investment. On Athens' part. Next slide, please. So I wanted to introduce, um, also on our team, um, uh, Jacob Everett is our, uh, consultant, TAD consultant, um, and, uh, he's with McGuire Sponsel. Um, I forgot to, when I was introducing myself, introduce, uh, Brendan Madjev, who is with, uh, Virgin Health as our construction and management partner. He's also on and can jump in, um, anytime there's, uh, any questions on the, on that side. But Jacob, would you like to kind of, uh, take these slides that deal with the TAD and just, um, cover these? He's not on. Um, I can try to, uh, cover it. So what we're proposing here is, um, Trinitas is gonna build a, you know, a $70 million project and we're gonna build a $20 million project. And to combine that $90 million project, we'll throw off, um, you know, ta, uh, uh, taxes over the, uh, the next, uh, 20 years, the life of the TAD. And we're just asking for a, um, a percentage of, of those TAD dollars. Um, and it's a, there's a $2 million gap in our budget. And so we invest for, um, 2.9 million over eight years. Jacob, are you?
Yeah, Will, I, I got kicked out. I'm back in. I apologize. One of those nights.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we're just demonstrating here, you know, the mechanics of the TAD. You all, I'm sure understand this, you know, basically the TAD's brand new, so there's, there's no revenue in it now. Um, obviously as incremental investment gets made within the, the TAD, uh, that revenue will begin to get captured and then it can be spent on additional projects. So, uh, we're just showing here that in the first few, few years, obviously we're requesting some of that would be spent on the investment in workforce housing. Um, uh, it's, it's important to note, uh, we have not requested 100% of the TAD increment. And so we have requested 75%, so 25% would be available to the Mayor Commission to do other projects with those TAD funds. In year, somewhere around year eight, we expect the investment would be fully, uh, made and, and paid off. So that's why you see in years five to 10, you're getting a lot more revenue in that bucket. Um, still doing both workforce housing investment and other projects. And then by year 10, probably by year eight, um, the workforce housing investment goes away and all of that new revenue is available, uh, to the Mayor Commission, uh, to invest in additional projects. Next slide. Uh, this is just a visualization. So this is, uh, if you're looking left to right, this is kind of a visualization, um, over, over time. So starting when, uh, these properties come online and begin being taxed and generating tax revenue. And then, um, I believe your, your intention is for your TAD to expire after 20 years, so in 2040. Um, so this is just showing that, um, currently there's three parcels involved. They generate around $22,000 in property taxes every year. Uh, 9,000 of that goes to, to you and the Unified Government. The other 13,000 goes to the school. This, uh, new project, the master development, including all the market rate housing and the workforce housing, will generate uh, over a million dollars a year and, uh, and, uh, new incremental taxes, uh, above the 22. And so what we're showing here is obviously in the, in the early years, we, we show you making the $2.9 million investment in workforce housing. That leaves an additional 5.5 million, um, through 2040 that would be available, uh, during the 20-year life of, of the TAD. Um, as you all understand, uh, the TAD has a base value. So the light blue color you have there is the 153, that's your base value. So that's your 9,000 per year that you're already receiving. Then that's not gonna go away. You continue to receive that. And then once you get past 2040, um, you'll get an additional $500,000 a year that'll go straight to Unified Government once the, uh, the TAD expires. And you can see a similar, uh, display there for the school as well. Uh, we can go to the next slide. And finally, just one more visualization here. So again, uh, we've got that entire bucket of, of new tax revenue that's created over the life of, uh, during the period the TAD exists. Uh, obviously a chunk of that goes directly to the school. They're not participating in the TAD. And this, this just shows the breakdown of what the TAD would have to do, uh, for other projects with and pursue other initiatives. And then the, the percentage of the investment that would go into the workforce housing, uh, investment project. Uh, next slide. Will, I think, are you muted?
You're muted now, Will. I think you were on there a moment ago. There you go.
Can you hear me now? Thank you.
Yep.
Jacob, for that explanation, um, I think it's important to talk about, I guess, um, who our tenants will be. Um, you know, I mentioned that kind of missing middle. Um, if you, uh, make above 120% AMI, there are no barriers to housing. Um, and if you make below 60% of AMI, there are programs, low-income programs, um, that you would qualify for. Um, and so it's a, uh, that's why we call it the missing middle. It's just the, um, the less developed properties, how, the challenge being how do you provide new construction, Class A quality housing? Usually the, uh, workforce, uh, gets put into older product. The challenge being how do you provide new, um, top-quality product for, um, everyone? Um, and so, um, there's the, the, these, um, programs like low in, low-income housing tax credits that offer subsidy. And if, you know, uh, I think it's interesting, if this were a low-income housing project that was below 60% AMI, there would be about $8 million in subsidy available through tax credits. But since, um, the key to that is you have to be in a qualified census tract, which this property is not in. Um, so, uh, you know, that, that's not available. Um, but I think it's, uh, important to have a, a healthy housing market has a mix of all, all product types, low-income housing, workforce housing and market rate housing. Um, market rate housing, um, is obviously supports itself with higher rents. So we're trying to, um, capture, um, the, as many, um, income brackets as possible. So that's a diverse, uh, mixed income project. So you have all different kinds of, uh, jobs, all different kinds of careers. Um, you know, there's, it's a, it's a good mix of, of incomes and different types of, of tenants. Uh, my next slide, please. Uh, this is just restating again that our rents are pulled from HUD, um, based off of incomes. Um, if you're a, a two-income family, um, with two people working, your income goes up to $74,000 in Athens. I guess that should be pointed out. Next slide, please. So here is the, uh, rent breakdown. Um, we've, uh, pulled here on the left what the 2021 HUD income ranges are for Athens. So, um, as we discussed before, uh, 60% with a one person is at 28,000. And then, uh, going all the way up to 120% for two incomes at 74,000. And that throws off, HUD publishes their 2021 rates, says at 60%, that's, uh, $722 for the 60% studio, all the way up to $1,800 for 120% uh, two-bedroom. Um, we've worked with, uh, the land trusts to back out utilities. So for a, uh, one-bedroom, you'd have an $85 allowance for a, uh, a, sorry, for a studio for a one-bedroom, 113 and $140 for a two-bedroom. Um, and so the, for us, that's rent starting at $638 for studio going up to, we're capping rents at $1,300 because we believe over that, we are competing with market rate housing. Um, so that's, uh, the kind of the 100% max there. Our, uh, breakdown with, uh, with the land trust is that we will do at least a third of the units at the 60 to 80, uh, at least a third of the units at the, uh, 90 to 100, at least a, a third at uh, 100 to 120. Um, you know, if, based on demand, if we can always go lower, but we won't go higher than that. Um, and so, uh, you know, the ideal property ends up at about 90% AMI. So where you have a good, uh, good, at e, a good amount of tenants at each bracket. Um, and so that, that's what our goal will be. Slide. Um, this is just restating the, uh, YTEC program that is governing, uh, the workforce housing. Um, you know, we hope that there's, um, more development in the, in the lower income, uh, ranges for, um, for those individuals. Uh, unfortunately, you know, the more, uh, subsidy you need, uh, to, you'll need to, uh, provide for those low-income housing. So we, this was kind of a, a nice niche when we were talking with Athens that needed to be filled with, uh, a smaller amount of subsidy, but hitting a, a missing middle section of employees. Next slide. I guess, uh, on that last slide, you know, um, just to comment on rents, you know, it, it's also, it's hard to look at, uh, other projects and say, well, uh, their rents seem higher than that project or this project. Um, you know, we're really just trying to, uh, look at, you know, where we compete against other Class A projects. Um, you know, our rents will be 45% lower than the, uh, Trinitas project on average, uh, which is, is really substantial. Um, you know, I, I think if you, you can probably go out and find a cheaper rent than $600 for a studio, but you won't find a Class A product, um, so, and, uh, and in perpetuity. Um, this slide is just from, uh, some studies that were done by Georgia Institute. Um, we're on housing and they kind of show the, uh, that, that middle band that we're trying to target in the, the population. Um, per this study, it says there are 5,600 families in Athens that are in our 60 to 120% AMI range. And so our 120 units would only be 2% of that total, uh, demand pool. Next slide, please. Um, yeah, there's just a, a critical need for workforce housing in, in almost every community, um, uh, per, uh, the Georgia studies. We know that there is in Athens as well. Um, we think this, uh, product would be very successful. Um, there's just a growing shortage of, of, of attainable quality housing. And, um, that's what we're aiming to fill, um, that need here. Next slide, please. I think a, a, a great stat was that 40,000 individuals commute into Athens every day to work. Um, you know, there's tons of great studies about the advantages of living near where you work. You're more, uh, tied to your community. You're, you're, you're less commuting, so you're, you're happier. Uh, um, there's, uh, also an economic advantage where those people that, uh, have the opportunity to live close to where they work in Athens, uh, will, will stay in Athens and pay taxes in Athens. And so from a budget standpoint, you're just growing your tax base. So there's both, both, uh, uh, a happy wellness factor and a, uh, economic factor. Next slide, please. Um, this is just, uh, some renderings of, uh, of the units from the interior. So you can kind of see a quality level. Um, finishes granite countertops, um, uh, quality, uh, uh, lighting, high-end features that you would see in any market rate, um, project, large windows, natural light is very important. Slide, please. Um, a sample project that, um, we've done recently completed called River View Apartments. Um, as you can see, um, just the bright lots of natural light, um, in the kitchens, um, iron fixtures, granite countertops, um, amenities, uh, workout facilities, um, just like a, any Class A project. Next slide, please. Um, this is my recap. I hope I, I didn't go too long. I know it's late, um, but I just wanted to reinforce, I guess, a few points. Um, that, you know, we're just, uh, really trying to, um, provide a service that we think is needed in, uh, Athens and provide that in permit, uh, per, uh, permit fashion. Um, I think it's unique. We've never done a, uh, deed restricted project, but, uh, working with Athens Land Trust, I think has been a great partnership, um, to oversee that, uh, that requirement. And again, there's the quality, um, the, the demand, um, you know, the 120 units is only 2% of the total, um, population. And, um, just the advantages of having a wide, uh, range of incomes in any project is, um, is, is very profound. At this point, I would, I couldn't open up to questions, um, myself and Jacob. That was our, our slide presentation.
Thanks, Will. Thanks, Jacob. Uh, questions for the team?
I, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Carol.
Um, I'm trying to understand the Class A, B and C, and I was, I've had a, um, I've woken up again um, and paying attention here and really was focusing on what you were saying. But I did, did look up what Class A and B and C are. And well, in the, the couple of links I found while I was listening closely, and it sends to me that, like, all new, you know, all new buildings are Class A. So could, i- if that's not the case, could you clarify what Class A is versus other classes?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, a difference between, between, uh, construction qualities in, um, some, uh, different product types. Oftentimes you'll see low-income housing being built to a lesser quality where they're not using, um, uh, I guess, market rate finishes. So like countertops, you know, you'll see vinyl countertops, cheaper cabinets, lower-end fixtures. Um, it's really a, uh, it's a market rate standard versus a, uh, lesser, uh, standard.
So I'm assuming there must be like then Class A++ standards as well, huh?
Yeah, yes. I mean, as properties age and they're not renovated, um, is really how they become, they move to B and C.
Okay.
There is a, there's a life to any building, but you could, with proper maintenance and, uh, reinvestment, you can keep a, you know, a new construction property, uh, class, uh, continually Class A um, for, you know, several decades with proper maintenance. Use, what happens is when older stock just gets, uh,
Right.
stopped being maintained properly.
So, so any new building in apartment buildings or multifamily buildings that were not, like, built in some sort of affordable housing unit would be Class A. Is that correct or not correct?
Um, yes, uh, more or less. I, I think it depends on the, um, market you're, you're trying to develop towards. We're trying to compete with that market rate quality. And so that's the, 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 the finish package we would use would be the same as any market rate developer.
And did you say that the rest of this would be, um, I mean, the, the non, uh, workforce housing would be 40% higher, the market rate prices?
Correct.
Okay. And then could you explain the utility thing again? I mean, let's say I get, how does that play out? Like I get a one-bedroom apartment and how does that, do I still pay other utilities or I, I'm confused about that?
We just lower your rent by the, that allowance. So, uh, we took the 722 that HUD spit out. And then for a studio, we knocked $70 off your rent. You still pay your utilities directly to the utility company. Where, that's just the discount we're giving, uh, for utilities. That's something that the land trust is, they are used to doing that and they, the properties they work with. And so they preferred us to do that. And so, uh, you know, we, uh, agreed that we could just do that. The, the tenants won't see any difference. Their rent will just be lower than what the HUD, YTEC rents.
Okay. So, so it's basically the land trusts that have negotiated with you to lower the rents. So people would have more money in their pocket to pay their, their utilities. Okay.
Kelly, it's Abida and I'm
Yeah.
I'm about to say goodnight.
Okay.
Thank you for the presentation, um, but I would like to hear the recommendations from, from the committee before I say goodnight.
Okay. Uh, uh, other questions for the development team? Jesse?
I'm just curious, you know, impacts on traffic and sewer and things like that. Has that all been factored in if we're adding more density here? Is there adequate infrastructure to accommodate all that? Has that been looked into already?
Yeah, um, with our, uh, team, combined team Trinitas, there's, uh, a, a lot of infrastructure being upgraded, uh, new, new traffic light going in, new bus stop. Water and sewer will need to be upgraded. We're also adding, you know, amenities. The Trinitas has a retail component to their project that will be built. There's a lot of other components, I guess I was just presenting on our one small piece tonight.
Yeah, this is Mark Beck with Trinitas. If I could just chime in real quick. So there with the SCP and with the workforce housing, there's no additional density that's being added to the project. So when we went through the entitlement process, we entitled five hundred and one dwelling units. So of those five hundred and one dwelling units, there won't be a change to that. So it's not like there's workforce housing in addition to those five hundred and one. It's just that there will be additional market rate that are then converted to workforce housing. So the five hundred and one stays, there's no additional density. It is just more of those market rate would be transitioned to workforce housing. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Any others? Okay. All right. Thanks, Will. Thanks, Jacob. Thanks, Mark. And then I think staff is going to talk a little bit about the sort of TAC review.
Sure. So Brad, could you please share the screen again? There's a couple of slides that are kind of afterwards. But so you've heard a little bit about the project from Will and from Jacob and from Mark. And you've heard a bit about the history and the timeline from from plane. So I'll tell you a little bit about the Lexington Road TAD Advisory Committee members. They're made up of Dr. Shanice Allen, Rhett Butler, Brantley Colbert, Shane Dekel, Dr. Mac Duncan, and May Walter. And the group is a mix of residents of the area, business owners in the area, and property owners in the area. And so they spent quite a bit of time thinking and talking and discussing and asking good questions about this project. So next slide, please. So the group on their May the sixth meeting drafted this recommendation and approved it. And I'll just read it out loud to y'all, but you can also see it on your screen. We are unanimously opposed to using taxpayer TAD dollars to add additional workforce housing to the Trinitas project at twenty four hundred Lexington Road. We have consensus on the following. There are many constructive uses of the TAD dollars that will impact more ACC citizens, not just the few that might occupy the few additional units. The proposed subsidized workforce housing rental rates are similar to or greater than existing available units. We base this opinion on information provided by the applicant as well as research on available local units. Two and three bedroom units are more appropriate for workforce housing. We're not experts on this. This is just what we think. The money can be better used to provide incentives for businesses to occupy currently vacant buildings and property within the TAD district. The money can be used to provide job training focused on development of our TAD district. The money can be used to augment some of the Lexington Road corridor initiatives, which may be underfunded. Significant increased tax dollars from this project will not become available until 2024, so it seems short sighted to commit such a large amount to a single project with impact to a limited number of people.
Thanks for going over that, Elka. I appreciate it. And thanks for working with the with the TAC as well.
So Mayor, the the agenda item with the Community Benefits Agreement is on the agenda for June first vote.
Okay. Thanks, Blaine. Any commission follow up?
Question. How often did the land trust meet with the developers and 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 put this together? Was it one meeting or two or ten? How detailed was those, those meetings?
Jacob, Will?
Yeah, I can answer that. Yeah, it was definitely over ten. We've had a lot of different calls, a lot of different discussions on what's the proper oversight? How do you create a project in perpetuity? So I would say it was very well thought out in our agreements, both the operating agreement and our land's restriction were done over many months of discussion.
Okay, thank you. I had another question, but I can't remember. So I'll pass.
Will, I would just add to that two things. One, again, to reiterate, the rent levels that that this project is committed to in perpetuity are set by the federal government. These are not numbers that Strategic Capital Partners or Trinitas makes up on a yearly basis. These are fed fed down from the federal government. And then second is just to reiterate, the oversight agreement that is in place with the Athens Land Trust. So they will have a supervisory role to make sure that the development is in compliance with the commitments that have made on the affordability of these units.
So you're, so actually, the, so everything is on track now. And the, the, all the contracts with the land have been signed. I mean, this is ready to roll. The leasing property and everything has been taken care of.
Correct. Yeah, it's a shovel ready project. You know, Trinitas is going to move forward whether the additional fifty four units are built or are, I guess, funded. If if the TAD allocation is not approved, SCP would not be a part of the project. Trinitas would move forward with their project. We would not move forward with our involvement if without the subsidy dollars. But it is ready to roll. We've got a big date of July twenty twenty three set.
And I guess that's my bit was my concern. This was kind of, there was a deadline, I think, that we had to vote on because you guys had something to do by February the something. So whatever you had to do, did you do it?
Yeah, we are on our our current schedule. We've, you know, would have liked to have been under construction by now, but we've delayed our process as long as we could to allow for the TAD process to come, go through its steps. So we're kind of at a at our our drop dead date.
So the, so the land has been purchased? That that's done?
It's it's under contract. We will, I guess, Mark, do you want to talk about closing dates and?
So how far down the road are you expecting to close?
Yeah, so the land is under contract right now. By the time we get through our complete design, submit for permits, and then we'll be ready to close as soon as those permits are issued. So we're expecting all that to be this fall for being able to close on land and then start construction. But there's a lot of steps that have to go into that with design, bidding and working with the contractors, getting the final pricing, working through any issues that might come up, and then also going through permits with the with the city and county. So a lot of steps to go through, but but this fall is when we're expecting to start construction.
Melissa?
Um, can we get any kind of input from the land trust about their feelings about, you know, the the TAD investment in the affordable housing component? That's my first question. I'd like to hear their opinion since they're kind of experts in this stuff. And I'd also like to know if those, the committees' recommendations for stuff that they think the the TAD would be better spent on, are those even things that can legally be used for TAD money with TAD money? I'm just wondering if that's even part of our TAD outline or even like within the parameters of Georgia law?
So TADs can pay for capital costs and then some, you know, associated support around those capital costs, engineering, kind of similar preparatory activity, but not not operational matters or training.
Yeah, they're talking like job training and like some kind of small business assistance. You know, I know there's some business vacancies in the area, and I feel like, you know, my reason for support, one of my big reasons for supporting this project is, I feel like part of the reason there is so much vacancy in that area is because there's such a dearth of residential housing. So, yeah, I mean, I feel like the the committee's expectations are a little unrealistic and 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 malinformed as far as like, you know, what a TAD is for or can be, can do.
But they've also talked about infrastructure, Melissa.
Yeah, they did talk about that, too.
Yeah, they did. And that and 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 so we can't brush over that.
Yeah.
And I do agree, I would like to hear from the land trust also. We have had three groups deny this pro, this project. And now even the TAD committee doesn't support the TAD. So let's hear from the land trust also. But let's not walk away thinking they did not ask the right questions. They did ask the right questions. Don't pick pick and choose. I'm going to say good night now.
Thanks, Ms. Scher. Any others for us? Circle back to Carol. Go ahead, Carol.
Yeah. I did have a question. Well, first of all, I did watch some of the attack committee meetings or listen to them. And I I would say I was actually really, really impressed with the work that they did and the thoroughness. And I think one of the things they wanted to do was have an opportunity for the community or for them to think about how the TAD money should be spent before deciding on the first project. But in in addition to that, I just want to understand with this finance financing, my understanding, and I think you guys all just mentioned it as well, was that if this TAD is not approved, then the group, and I apologize, I forget your the name, will not go forward with the workforce housing project that's been presented. In that case, is Trinitas going to take over that affordable, that workforce housing that is part of the the planned development that was approved?
Correct, yes. We're involved if the additional fifty four units get approved. If they do not, the plan that was approved for the sixty six units will continue with Trinitas. Mark, would you like to comment on anything else?
Yeah, just to clarify. So we, if it's not approved, Trinitas will still move forward with the fifteen percent set aside by dwelling units, as as we had talked about when the plan development was approved. But Strategic Capital Partners would not move forward with their project, which would then be the additional fifty four units for the one hundred and twenty workforce housing units. So we would continue to move forward. It would just be for the fifteen percent set aside by dwelling unit.
Any others? All right. And and I've emailed the presentation to commission and attorney and manager. So you've got to copy that. All right, everybody. I appreciate you coming out tonight. Thanks for staying late. Wish you well. Rest up and we'll see you next time.